Hi Tammy, it's Peter.
Hi Peter.
Hi, I'm gonna give you back host, I just joined WebX now.
Okay, perfect, thanks Peter.
Okay, thank you. And any members that have their computers on, make sure your computer is on, the speakers are off, to minimize the feedback, because you're gonna use the brick in front of you for speaking.
Does everything else work right now?
I'm sorry?
You can hear me okay?
But you're gonna use this to speak. You're not using your laptop.
Your laptop is just for your chat function.
Yeah.
Alright.
So just make sure on your laptops, your speaker, mic is off and your speaker is off. Hi. Okay, test, just make sure the audio is okay. We're good? Okay. Welcome to our special council meeting in February 2022. This meeting has been called by a petition of majority members of council for the following specific purposes: Discussion regarding the rules and procedure for conduct of meetings; motion request disclosure of the closed meeting minutes and recording of council meeting on Wednesday, January 26; Motion request an investigation by the ombudsman of the closed session Wednesday, January 26; Closed session business in accordance with open session meeting exception under Section 2392B and D of Municipal Act; personal matters about identifiable individual including municipal or local board employees; and labour relations or employee negotiations. Under council's meeting rules, no other business can be considered at this meeting, a special meeting. We will begin the meeting with the city clerk calling the role for attendance at today's meeting. Members of council, I will call your name, please indicate your presence for today's meeting. Counselor Santos. Counselor Visante.
Present.
Counselor Willens.
I'm here, Peter.
Thank you. Counselor Pelashi.
Present.
Present. Counselor Bowman.
Present.
Present. Counselor Maderos.
Here.
Present. Counselor Williams.
I am here, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Fortini.
I'm here.
Present. Counselor Singh.
Present.
Present. Counselor Dillon.
I am here.
Present. And Mayor Brown, all eleven members are present. Mr. Mayor, nine in chambers in person, two remote. Okay. We are now at item two, approval of agenda, we have a motion moved by Counselor Pelashi? I'm sorry. Okay, let's just speak, okay. We have a... Already, or?
I'd like to speak, yeah.
Before we get to the approval of agenda?
No, you just called approval of agenda, so.
Okay. We have a motion moved by Counselor Pelashi, seconded by Counselor Dillon to approve the agenda. Instead of seeking a recorded vote for this item, I will ask, is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in the affirmative. And we have a request to speak, Counselor Pelashi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, given the... The, some of the comments coming from fellow councillors, I think it's really important that we deal with item 4.3 first, I think that's something that we can all get behind and support, so I request the varying of the order to deal with 4.3 first today. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak.
Yes, Counselor Maderos.
No, I think the special council meeting was called with the purpose of providing this agenda. Majority of members of council petitioned, and I would not be supportive of changing the order. And I do understand that change of order, city clerk would require two-thirds.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to vary the order requires only a majority vote of the council.
Okay, that's fine, but I would strongly encourage, we have six members of council who moved this agenda on special petition. Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers?
I just provide a quick comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Since it's obvious that six members of council, listening to Counselor Maderos speak on their behalf, say that they're not willing to support that, my only comment would be, I don't think we've ever not allowed a member of council to vary the order in the past, and this is unprecedented.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, it seems that I would like to respond, please.
Counselor Maderos?
I'm not sure in terms of the memory, I know before too, we used to add things to the agenda, then after the last couple of weeks, we've been playing these games with two-thirds. So the same consideration has been given to councillors, and we're not playing the wiggle room, we're not supporting, I'm not supporting changing the order, and I would like to proceed. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other speakers. We have, instead of seeking a recorded vote for the approval of the agenda, I'll ask, is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in the affirmative.
Can you just provide clarity, Mr. Mayor? Has the agenda, is the agenda gonna be... Is the motion moved by Counselor Pelashi going to be considered?
I...
Or we're just approving as is?
Yeah, I thought we were approving as is, you had your request to...
I request that we vary the order.
Okay, so you want to vote on that? Okay.
So recorded vote, please?
Okay. Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, recorded vote's been requested on varying the order to deal with item 4.3 before 4.1 presumably. All those in favor of varying the order to deal with 4.3 first, please indicate. Counselor Santos. Counselor Visante.
Yes.
That's a yes for Counselor Santos, Counselor Visante is a yes, Counselor Willens.
No.
No from Counselor Willens, Counselor Pelashi.
Yes.
That's a yes from Counselor Pelashi, Counselor Bowman.
No.
That's a no from Counselor Bowman, Counselor Maderos.
No.
It's a no from Counselor Maderos, Counselor Williams.
No.
A no from Counselor Williams, Counselor Fortini.
No.
A no from Counselor Fortini, Counselor Singh.
Yes.
A yes from Counselor Singh, Counselor Dillon.
No.
A no from Counselor Dillon, Mayor Brown.
A yes.
A yes from Mayor Brown. That motion does not carry, the vote is five to six. So, Mr. Mayor, we then need to just take a vote on the approval of the agenda.
We have a motion moved by Counselor Pelashi, seconded by Counselor Dillon. Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are now at item three, declarations of interest. Under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, do any members have a declaration of kinney or interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Hearing none, the clerk will so note for the meeting minutes. Our next item is 4.1, a discussion of item regarding the rules of procedure for conduct of meetings. Counselor Maderos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council would have just received a copy, I'm not sure, Peter Faye. I do know that due to ongoing, I guess confusion from, in terms of rules of procedure and interpretation of rules of procedure. And I want to preface this by, by no means is this a reflection on our city clerk, who, our city clerk's office and team, as we have a considerable respect and a long career that we both admire and respect. You've been at the City of Branton, and by no means is this a reflection on our clerk. However, we do have, you know, dealt with over the last couple of years in council on rules of procedure, on interpretations, which, in my view, have not been accurate, and such in other members' view as well. We've seeked legal advice to ensure that our rules of procedure at the City of Branton is being interpreted to avoid any such confusion. Our first item, and to you, city clerk, regarding the resolution by the clerk. I know in the past, and not specifying it, there has been an interpretation that the chair has a power to override clerk. And according directly from our procedural bylaw, it's the clerk who's responsible to interpret and administer the rules. And I just want to get clarity in your perspective, Peter, that normally, when, under our procedural bylaw, that when a vote is asked for based on a resolution which has been properly recognized, that it's the city clerk who administers the vote, and there is no opportunity. So there's been confusion over the last couple of years in terms of who in fact decides if that's a properly placed motion to vote on or not. So, city clerk, if you can provide comments on what in fact our procedural bylaw states?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to members of council. First, I'll just preface my remarks by saying, I'm just seeing this attachment, which appears to be a legal opinion for the very first time, but I think I'll speak to your question as opposed to having that chance to review this. So if your question is, what is the role of the clerk in terms of interpreting and administering the rules of council's procedural bylaw? There is a, there is an interpretation section to our procedural bylaw, as there is to many procedural bylaws, which basically says, and I'll quote, "The clerk shall be responsible to interpret and administer the rules of procedure under this procedural bylaw." So that's a clear statement. However, the role of the clerk has been, and in my fifteen years here in council, and in my years prior to that, working at the City of Toronto, the role of the clerk is inherently to advise. The clerk is not a decision maker, as the eleven decision makers are around this council. So my role as clerk is to advise in accordance with the procedural bylaw, in accordance with the Municipal Act and other prevailing legislation and city policy. It is the role of the chair to rule or decide, and it's the role of council to vote and decide. So it's identifying those respective roles. So I see my role as an advisor when called upon, and I'll provide my procedural advice. And there have been many cases when that advice has been accepted, and there's been many cases when that advice has not been accepted. And that's, that's the, that's the role that I fulfill, and I understand that. So I'm not, I think that's answering your question, so.
Yeah.
I do not have a mandate, a statutory authority to override or a decision that may be made of a meeting chair, or certainly a decision made of council as a decision body. My role is to advise council on its meeting procedures.
So, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you, Peter, and again, by no means trying to put you on the spot, but according to our procedural bylaw, and in the legal opinion, it states very clear, for example, whether or not a matter is subject to a motion for reconsideration is a decision delegated to the clerk in the procedural bylaw. The decision of the clerk is final, it must be implemented by the chair. Any deviation from the direction of the clerk requires council to suspend this aspect of the procedural bylaw by two-thirds majority vote, assume that delegated power, council would then have the authority to determine if a motion required reconsideration, and the vote to make the determination would be a simple majority. So it's very clear in our own procedural bylaw, it's not a question of interpretation, clerk, it's final and must be implemented by the chair. So that's one. Going on to another issue that seems to have arisen here in Branton on several occasions. Who decides, city clerk, who could remain in a room during a closed session? And that seems to be another sort of issue we've encountered over the, this term of council, on who determines who's in the room. Based on, again, a legal proceeding, based on legal advice, in fact, the CEO does have that authority. But when we're discussing directly the CEO, that it's council, from legal advice, who determines by simple majority who is in fact in that room. And this is very clear, and again, in other closed sessions, the decision as to who should be present likely rests with the chair. This is because the chair has a duty to undertake all matters required to permit meetings to proceed in orderly and efficient manner. In an event that a member of council disagrees with the chair, the ruling who have remained in closed session, any member may raise a point of order. So that's the second aspect. The third, through you, Mr. Mayor, a point of order, and again, seeking legal advice, according to our own procedural bylaw. A member has the opportunity to raise a point of order. Once leave is granted, the member states the point of order, and the chair must decide on the point. If any member wishes to challenge this chair's decision on the point of order, the chair shall immediately take a vote. And whether to sustain the chair's decision without debate in the decision of council is final. This is not a chair's ruling. The bylaw is unambiguous on this point, the chair must hold a vote if the ruling on the point of order is challenged. Because the bylaw is silent, is whether it is a majority or two-thirds majority that is required to vote on this matter, a simple majority is all that is needed to sustain the ruling. Our last point, the process for reopening a question dealt with in a previous meeting. To reopen a matter is decided in a different meeting. The motion must comply with the notice requirements by the bylaw, the motion must be moved by a member who voted on the prevailing side of the original motion, the motion, if the motion originally failed, the motion to reopen must come from a member who voted against it. The member who moves to reopen must provide reasons to why a two-third majority is required. If there was a previous motion to reopen, the question which did not receive a two-thirds majority, the motion is to reopen, the question cannot be considered again during the same term of council. This process presumes that the original vote is the same as a vote under consideration, where there's a motion seeking the same relief for result as a previous motion, but for different reasons, or the motion is based on new information, that previous decision does not constitute a matter decided at a previous meeting. As stated above, the clerk has authority to make the determination, once made, the chair and council must implement that decision. Neither council nor their chair have authority to ignore the ruling of the clerk as to whether a matter is not, is or not a reconsideration. So this is legal advice that I received, and again, again, I'm, we're at the region appeal, many councillors here. We've gone through many of these procedures that seem to be, you know, at the region appeal respected, but somehow, there's been, it seemed to be confusion. And again, I'm not pointing fingers, saying that it's been deliberate, I'd hate to think that it's deliberate, that there's been a misinterpretation of rules, or there's been pressure to be put on for that misinterpretation. However, this is just legal advice for our better understanding, and I just hope as we proceed in the remaining months before election, that we proceed in a manner which is, respects not only our bylaws, that respects democracy, and that respects decisions being taken here at the City of Branton. It's been disappointing what we've had to encounter over and over, over the last couple of years, in terms of misinterpretation, people interrupting, saying point of orders without stating what the point of order is. And for us to have decorum, for us to be able to conduct meetings appropriately for the positions we hold, this can't continue. So I thought that we would bring this legal advice, and to other members of council who showed the same interest in getting that legal advice or providing it, I do thank you. So that is, I think, the first agenda item, and I'm not sure if others may intervene, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just think that we had to provide context again to, and provide information, so everyone is aware of exactly the information that we're dealing with and what the rules of procedure state. Thank you.
Counselor Pelashi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Maderos, and I agree with a lot of the things that you did mention. You know, I think it's important that we all show some respect around, around this council chambers. I can't talk about your legal advice as it was sent to us after the meeting had started, but that being said, I'm sure that you, well, you know, that once it gets sent out to members of council, then it is kind of in the public realm, the public can ask for it. So I guess a question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Maderos, is it your intention to provide the, your legal opinion to, to the public?
Mr. Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, my legal advice is that... This was advice that I seeked, I shared it as an information to all members of council, and I can choose to do with what I want in terms of this legal advice, as this legal advice was provided to me as a councillor, and I shared it as a information, provide more information for this discussion. Thank you.
Counselor Pelashi, still before?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I hope Counselor Maderos wasn't offended, I wasn't asking him or telling him to do anything. I think what I'm just trying to understand is, as he referenced the legal advice, the public hasn't had an opportunity, nor has any member of council, I assume, been able to look at the, at the legal advice. But that being said, it's, I guess it depends on whether it was sent to us private and confidential, Peter, is that, or maybe Samir? If a member of council sends other members of council legal advice that they sought after, is it under, under the Freedom of Information Act, can't anybody obtain it from me or any member of council now?
Through, through the chair, as a practical matter, the advice has just been... If it, if it's shared, it's, it's in a public forum, it's not subject to solicitor-client privilege, and that would be a waiver of privilege. I also note that under the council handbook, there are procedures relating to the obtaining of external legal advice, and 7.5 talks about individual members are not at liberty to retain external counsel to provide the city with an opinion on an issue. That's the role of the, the city solicitor. I haven't had a chance to review this legal memorandum, I'm happy to do so, but I can't really speak to any of the contents of it, because it was just, I haven't seen it.
So no member of council can, can sought after their own legal advice, and to provide that to other members of council to make decisions?
Well, it's, it's, it's a free country, anybody can get whatever legal advice they want, but that's not legal advice of the city.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Samir. I guess my other question around points of order, and I guess I'm not sure, I'm glad Counselor Maderos is on the board again, and I'm, I'm just trying to follow along what he's, what he's saying. Peter, is it your interpretation that when a point of order is raised, the ruling of the mayor is whether that is a point of order? I wasn't following along with what Counselor Maderos was saying, could you, and you didn't, you didn't, there wasn't really a question, but I fully didn't understand what, what he meant by that. Could you clarify?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to members of council, a point of order is a defined term in our procedural bylaw, and it means a member calling attention to five things: any breach of the rules of order pursuant to this procedural bylaw, any defect in the constitution of any meeting, the use of improper, offensive or abusive language, notice of the fact that the matter under discussion is not within the scope of the proposed motion, any other informality or irregularity in the proceedings of the meeting. So a member is, in the section that I believe Counselor Maderos was citing, I believe it's section 10 of the procedural bylaw, a member can rise on a point of order, and the process is first, before stating a point of order, a member has to be recognized by the chair. Members cannot just speak, just start blurting things out, they have to be recognized to have the floor to speak. Once recognized, they can state...
Sorry, Peter, can you take your mask off and say that last part again, please?
Sorry. So the process for a point of order is for a member to rise or state a point of order, but they're not really entitled to speak until they're recognized and have the floor by the chair. So the chair will recognize the member, or give leave, as we call it procedurally, for the member to speak. The member will state their point of order, and then the member will, the procedural bylaw says, sit down, and the chair will usually rule on a point of order, depending on what the point of order is. Is it a legitimate point of order, is it not? If it's a point of order based on the five items that I suggest, that I laid out from the procedural bylaw, is there a ruling there? And if there is a ruling, and it's usually a ruling sort of on a defect in the meeting procedures, then it may be something that may be subject to challenge. So yes, that is the way that section 10 of the procedural bylaw is set out.
And it is very specific in our procedural bylaw on what can constitute points of order, correct?
There are five situations defined in the, in the procedural bylaws to what a point of order is.
And those five?
I'll read them again, are any breach of the rules of order pursuant to the procedural bylaw, any defect in the constitution of any meeting, the use of improper, offensive or abusive language, the notice of the fact that the matter under discussion is not within the scope of the proposed motion, any other informality or irregularity in the proceedings of the meeting. So, and our procedural bylaw says that the, the point of order is ruled on by the mayor, but that ruling may be subject to challenge, or what's referred to in our procedural bylaw as an appeal by the members. I do also wish to point out that one area where our procedural bylaw is silent is, and I have seen this in other procedural bylaws in other jurisdictions, is there are occasions when, specifically the City of Toronto procedural bylaw says that if the chair of the meeting, whether it's council or committee, is essentially reading a rule that is a rule in the procedural bylaw, that may not be something necessarily that's subject to a challenge, because it's just a statement of the rule, it's a statement of a fact that the council has collectively agreed to that they're going to abide by. Because otherwise, it's sort of under, it's, it could be abused as a means to undermine the effectiveness and efficiency of a meeting, if there are constant challenges to a ruling, when really the, the ruling or the statement of the chair is stating a rule that's in the procedural bylaw.
Right. Okay. And then the final thing, is it the, is it the mayor or chair of the committees prerogative to determine when they will, when they will go to the member that is raised on the... raised on the point of order? Like, I would think that if there is a member speaking and during that member is, is, is talking and, and asking questions, um, and a member raises on the point of order, you could allow that member to can, to finish speaking and then automatically pa- bypass the speakers list and go straight to the member that raised on the point of order. Is that right?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, that is a possibility. It may depend on the degree of, of the circumstances involved.
Yeah.
And so if it's, if it's something that everybody can observe, there is some point of order that a member is going to raise on, the, the chair may just decide to, um, stop the member who has the floor speaking and say, let's deal with the point of order, or the, as you suggest, the, the chair may wait until the member has finished speaking. Uh, it depends on the circumstances. So either of those options may be appropriate depending on the circumstances.
Okay. And then in normal course of, uh, of the duties of the chair and, and/or the mayor, then they would go back to that member to conclude their remarks after the point of order was dealt with?
Mr. Mayor and council, yes, that, that would be. After resolving the point of order, whatever that resolution may be, um, the meeting would presume.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are my questions.
Santos.
Thank you so much.
Oh, did I miss you? Um, I've got Counsel Santos, then Counsel Fortini, is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, yes, so- Through, through, Mr. Mayor, so members, uh, just a reminder, because this is a hybrid meeting, we have members participating remotely and in person, we are relying on the chat within the WebEx to be fair to the remote members. So in looking at that speakers list, I see Counsel Santos, after Counsel Pleschey, then followed by Counsel Fortini, Counselor Bowman, Counselor Williams, uh, and Counselor Willans.
Counselor Santos.
Thank you so much. And through you, Mr. Mayor, um, Counsel Pleschey had asked many of my questions, but, um, because we've just received this third-party legal advice, just clarification from the city solicitor in the, in the procedural, or in our book of procedures, it says that we should not be doing that? Just for clarification, please.
Uh, through the chair, um, our, uh, the council's handbook, uh, talks about the use of, uh, legal services staff in section 7.4 and the use of external legal advice in 7.5. And it's not the, uh, it's not the purview of individual members of council to obtain legal advice that would apply to the city, on behalf of the city. There may be instances where members of council, uh, need independent legal advice and they are, uh, entitled to obtain that, but, uh, legal advice that's obtained externally without going through the, the proper channels within the city, which includes the city solicitor's office, uh, is not advice that's, uh, that, that applies to as binding on the city.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and then the only other question that Counselor, um, Pleschey didn't cover from my end at this point, um, is, uh, 'cause this is the first time we're seeing this, uh, I'm wondering if this will be made public, uh, and also who paid for the legal advice?
Um, who was that question to? Counsel Santos?
I guess, I guess it would be to, to Counsel Maderos since he said he brought legal advice separately forward. So who paid for, like, who, was it Counsel Maderos that you, you paid for it personally or through, like, the corporate expense budget or through your council budget? Or how was this legal advice paid for?
It's up to Counsel Maderos if he wishes to answer that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, again, uh, this seems to be a pattern that this council or some council members like to do, which is to create a lot out of nothing. And maybe we can call this as the next boondoggle and refer to it as a barn, uh, type of, uh, situation. This is very clear. I seek the legal opinion on information that staff have given us which wasn't correct. So I, myself, shared the legal opinion, it's not legal advice, I'm not asking councillors to follow it, I shared in the spirit of collegiality, a legal opinion which I received personally. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. For you, Mr. Chair, that was just personal legal advice and, um, that we just received after the meeting had started. So Counsel Maderos, you're just asking us to, to read it now? Should we, should we take some time to review it? Because we just got it at 5:04 PM, right after the meeting, like, was, roll call was over.
Mr. Mayor, as I always say, I'm not asking you to do anything you don't want to do. I simply provided a legal opinion which I received. Uh, people can refer to it or not, people can share with it or not, and I, in fact, would be more than happy to receive information that other councillors may have that would provide me guidance, uh, and insight into decision-making at the City of Brampton. So I, I do not think that this is, uh, an official record. I shared it as a councillor in, uh, the spirit of collegiality and those who want to refer to it or not, it's really up to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Maderos for clarification.
Okay, um, Counsel Santos, is that, you're done? Next up is Counselor Fortini.
Thank you, Samir. Just to, uh, Samir, there are legal, so what we're saying is, you're saying that because it's outside legal advice and what we're providing is not part of our bylaws? Is that what you suggested?
Through the chair, what, what I'm saying is that there's a process for obtaining legal advice for the city. Um, if individual members wish to hire a lawyer to, and give them opinions on, on any question they like, they are free to do so, but that's not the legal advice that the city has obtained.
That's not what I'm asking. My, I'm asking, what we provided, is it under our procedural bylaws? I'm not saying to get outside legal advice. If we have to bring all four legal advice here and compete is a different story. I'm asking you as our solicitor, is it under our procedural bylaws what we provide? Yes or no?
Uh, if you, if you could help me, um, better understand the question, when you say, is it under our procedural bylaws? The procedural bylaws don't speak to this issue. This is a, uh, an issue that's found in the council handbook. Um, uh, it, could you, could you kind, uh, kindly elaborate on the, the question?
So, but Counsel Maderos and what we're bringing forward, under procedural bylaws, I'm asking you, are those part of what we should be doing under procedural bylaws? Is it legal or is it an option or is it the right way to do things?
Uh, w- well, a councillor's entitled to provide to council whatever, uh, they wish. Uh, I'm not, I'm not saying that, uh, a councillor is not entitled to, uh, provide information to council. Uh, I'm saying that this, that this is not the procedure by which we obtain legal advice in the city.
Uh, yeah, so you're saying that, you know, we're not allowed to seek outside legal advice because they don't work for the city. I'm just saying, is the legal advice we got, does it confirm with our bylaws and what we're talking about? Is it the right way to do, uh, legal opinion? That legal opinion?
Are, are you asking me for my opinion about the legal opinion? Because I'm not in a position to be able to do that. Uh, when you say it's in accordance with the bylaws, the bylaws don't speak, the procedural bylaw does not speak about the process for obtaining legal advice. That's something that's found in the council handbook and that's what I'm referring to.
No, I'm just asking, you know, the legal advice we got outside, you know, in other words, it looks, it seems to me that the legal advice we got is not correct. So that's what I'm trying to say. Is it correct or is it not correct? And again, you're going to speak that it's not a procedural bylaws on the handbook.
Through the chair, without, without actually reviewing the advice, I can't, uh, I, I can't, uh, posit an opinion on what I think about that legal advice. Um, as to the question of whether the city can utilize legal advice that's obtained in that way, I would severely caution against it. Um, you know, the question of solicitor-client privilege was brought up earlier. Um, that, there's, there's a certain process by which we, uh, both for legal reasons as well as administrative reasons within the city, that we obtain advice in a certain way. Um, I'm not speaking to the merits of the advice.
So why do we get legal insurance then if we can't see legal advice outside? Why are we paying for it?
Through the chair, I, uh, I'm not sure what you're referring to there. Uh, are you referring, there's the, the service that we, um, what is it called? There's a certain service that council has approved in the past to obtain legal advice, but that again is not legal advice for the city. That is legal advice specific to the council members.
Okay, so that legal advice is not admissible in the city, so why are we paying for it? And that's what I'm asking, we should not, we should stop paying for it. If we can't go outside and see legal advice and bring it here, why are we paying something when it's not admissible inside the council room? And so that's my advice. Okay. I'll let, I'll leave my questions now.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Fortini. Um, next up is Counselor Bowman.
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is not so much legal advice to my looking at it, it's a legal opinion on what our procedural bylaw actually says. So what options are available to council if in the past, some of us believed that the advice we were getting, um, could be questioned? What was our option then?
So through the chair, um, I would, uh, in terms of, uh, procedures and the procedural bylaw and how that operates within the city, I must admit that, uh, the city clerk has much more experience than I do, um, and is, is much more familiar with the procedural bylaw. As a general matter about, uh, if there's a question which council has about, um, you know, the workings of council or, or any, or anything else for that matter, uh, that's, that's what I'm here for and my office is here for, to provide the legal advice that you require.
Okay. So, Samir, you know, we respect your legal advice all the time when we, when we come into council. Um, but in a situation where someone was, does not agree with your legal advice, where to come to you to get more legal advice? About our procedures?
Through the chair, um, council could, uh, conceivably decide to get their own independent, uh, legal advice, but that would be through council.
Okay, so as a, as a member of council, what you're saying is we are pretty much, um, helpless in getting our own legal opinions about what we believe?
Uh, through, through the chair, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that council acts by the will of council. Um, and, uh, you know, council can, can make motions and make resolutions and, uh, can pass bylaws and, uh, in the same way, if they wish to get a legal opinion other than from me, uh, you know, they're, they can do so as council.
But not as an individual? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, I'm, I'm saying, uh, as, as an individual, you're also free to get your own legal advice about, uh, you know, the council handbook is examples of, um, for example, matters relating to personal conflicts of interest. That's an area where I cannot give legal advice to the members of council because they're not acting as council, they're acting in their individual capacities. Um, and so, you know, this is, are we, uh, uh, nobody's precluding a member of council from getting independent legal advice relating to their individual circumstances, but advice for council should be obtained through council. There's, um, you know, you, you can engage a lawyer if you don't want to engage the, the services of the city solicitor's office and there would be solicitor-client protection and there would be, you know, procedures and policies that would protect, uh, council in those circumstances.
So in this case, all we've asked for is an opinion, not advice, just an opinion on what currently exists in our own procedural bylaw that's completely available, open to the public, it's on our website, anybody can go and look at it. So all we're doing is asking for a second opinion on some things that are in that procedural bylaw. Is, is there a problem with that?
So through the chair, all I can point to is the, the fact that, you know, there's rules of how legal advice should be obtained and that can be found in the council's handbook.
But it's a legal opinion, it's not advice.
Uh, there's, um, it's, it's essentially the, the same thing. If you're asking a lawyer to provide you with an opinion on something, that's their advice on that, that matter. In any case, um, i- it's, it's not a question of semantics, it's a question of who's, who's obtaining, who's the client, who's the lawyer? Right? Are you, as a councillor, as an individual, the client or is the city the client?
So that's the only consideration then?
Sorry, uh, the, the other considerations are set out in, in the council handbook in terms of, you know, how, how those get paid and what's the approval process and, and things around that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Bowman, are you done?
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Counselor, uh, Williams.
Uh, thank you, through you, Mayor. Um, I was listening to the conversation, um, you know, through the mayor to Samir that you were just having with Counselor Bowman and, and I kind of heard you say it, it's not about semantics, but when I think about a legal, legal advice, usually that speaks to, um, some kind of recommendation of a direction that somebody would take. And, um, and so to Counsel Maderos, does this letter provide a recommendation? For council?
No. No, Counsel, uh, Williams. Uh, the letter, uh, is something that I consented to release, uh, and share with my colleagues and, uh, the letter was addressed to me and, uh, I paid out of my own pocket. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So the letter does not advise us to do anything? It's just, it's really just, uh, an opinion on the current procedures that we have. And, and to Samir, I think in our, our council expense policies or somewhere in there, I know you referenced 7.5, but I don't see it in our council expense policies, but I believe it says something along the lines of, in the event that the, like, the city is unable to provide you with legal opinions, um, then it would be eligible to seek elsewhere. Um, and I know you just said that, you know, you, in your legal opinion, you're not an expert on policies, you'd look to the clerk, so it'd be kind of hard for you to provide that legal, um, opinion or advice on some, on this area. So I, I, I'm just wondering if that piece is written in our policies around, in the event that we're not able to get, um, a legal opinion from the city, that we have that ability to look elsewhere?
Through the chair, uh, through the chair, I, I think we, we need to, um, uh, be a little bit more precise in the question. Are we talking about advice that individual members of council are obtaining for themselves or are we, um, speaking about advice that council is obtaining, acting in its capacity as council?
Yeah, and I think, I think this is where, um, you know, rhetorically, we're, we're just kind of, if we're, we're trying to say that, um, the councillor wasn't within their right to receive, uh, this opinion, I think we have to be kind of mindful with what we're trying to say because, you know, right now, um, we have this opinion, um, the, the councillor did seek this opinion himself and I, it, it's, it's pretty clear on what is being advised. And, and so I was really asking about our policies and with our policies, um, if we are not able to get this opinion or this advice from our legal department here and, or from you, then we are within our right to seek some type of legal opinion or counsel elsewhere.
Through the chair, um, you know, uh, obtaining legal advice from the city solicitor's office is not limited to, uh, advice of, uh, from just the individuals that happen to make up the legal department, though, you know, for the vast majority of issues, we are able to provide that, but as, as council is aware, on many occasions, we can engage external legal counsel as needed to provide, uh, specialized advice or advice on areas which, you know, we may not have, uh, internally within the department.
Well, I just have to say, I'm very impressed that Counsel Maderos was able to get this. It gives a different perspective. And, and I think when I heard Counsel Fortini asking that question around, is the advice we're getting in line with what the, uh, uh, advice that you would give on our procedures? Uh, I think that's still a good question to ask because is what we have here, what Counsel Maderos essentially read out, is that in line with how we operate here at the City of Brampton? And, uh, because we have been going through a process of trying to understand what our policies and procedures are, rules of all of these things, things get changed. I know I've been on the receiving end of things getting changed and, you know, so there's a lot of confusion and I think about how, if we are all over the map, how are residents going to be able to keep, be able to keep up with what's going on in these meetings? So, you know, it, it's great to have some clarity, um, and that, you know, hopefully we can get some clear answers because there are some things that we have to sort out. So, um, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Through, through the chair, um, I, I'm not in a position to be able to comment on legal advice that I have not reviewed and I'm also not- And I'm also not in a position to say whether my advice would be in the same vein as legal advice that I haven't reviewed, not only because I haven't reviewed it, but also because I've never been asked a question. So if counsel would like to ask a legal question of the city solicitor's office, we're happy to look into that and provide you with our view. And if we need to get external support, we're happy to do that as well.
Sorry, if I still have the floor, are you not able to provide that right now? We had questions about our procedure. We had, Counselor Maderos was able to read from the letter to speak on, you know, our procedural issues and, you know, who decides who remains in the room and in a closed session, the point of order, like, are you not able to speak to any of these aspects?
Through the chair, firstly, I have to just reiterate that I haven't read it. I did hear what Counselor Maderos read out. I don't think anybody would expect anybody to opine on something that was said very quickly at a meeting. And secondly, in providing legal advice, I would always recommend and advise counsel that legal advice should be done in closed session.
Closed session on our policies and our procedural bylaws. So, okay, you know what, thanks though, thanks for giving that clarification. I think, you know, we want to get some clarity and it feels like we're just not able to get it right now, but we do have this opinion in front of us and it speaks very clear. I do appreciate the clerk being able to give us his opinion and position on some things, but, you know, we do need to really be clear on what our procedures are, our rules of procedure. But I have no further questions or comments, thank you.
Counselor Williams.
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor and to Samir and through the clerk. Yes, this is, as Counselor, the only thing I wanted to say was that Counselor Maderos did make it clear that this was a legal opinion, it's not legal advice. And I think some members of counsel and perhaps the, Samir, you may be misinterpreting it. It is opinion. We can seek opinion outside. And I agree, you can't give us your advice on certain things, absolutely, you can't speak against our own procedural bylaw, but I think any member of counsel wants to get a second opinion, not advice, second opinion. I think that's their right to do so, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Next up is Counselor Deros.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. It just seems that we've been, the focus of the meeting was for us to provide clarity on, so we're all working under the same set of rules. To you, Mr. City Clerk, through you, Mr. Mayor, in the event, for example, on when someone doesn't follow the rules of procedure, our procedural bylaw. So for example, if we ask for a vote and under a point of order and the chair does not want to, what recourse do we have? Or if we want to clear a room by simple majority and, for example, you know, a member of staff or direction is not being followed, what recourse do we have as a counsel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So again, to reiterate, these are council's rules. Council decides the rules and council collectively, by accepting the rules, agrees to abide by them. Council can change its rules if it sees fit, but the rules are there and people understand them and they should follow them. There are mechanisms in the procedural bylaw as the collection of rules that allow for voting to occur, that allow for points of order, as you mentioned, and allows for the chair to rule in those certain circumstances for points of order and allows the majority of counsel to decide if they want to appeal that or not. Because there are some basic principles that exist within procedural bylaws and the basic principle is, it's the majority decide, the minority should be heard, all members have equal rights, all members should be treated fair and consistently, and all members are entitled to notice so they have, they're aware of the information for which they're expected to vote on. So those are basic principles upon which every procedural bylaw that I'm aware of across the province operates under. I will, again, this is my advice because I do not rule or decide. I will, I've had a moment to quickly go through the document that's been shared, I haven't read it all, but I will say the starting premise that is set out in that document, I do not agree with. I will, my advice will be is, as I said out before and as stated by the author of that document, is it implies that the clerk has the ability to rule and decide. But the clerk's role, as stated in the procedure bylaw, is to interpret and administer. My role in interpreting and administering is to implement the rules, meeting agendas, minutes, all that kind of stuff. And to interpret is to provide advice. But there is nowhere in there that says that the clerk rules or decides, that's left to counsel and through the leadership of the chair of the decision body. And nowhere in the municipal act does it say the clerk has that role. So that's just a basic premise, just by looking at the first few paragraphs, that I want to take a further look at the entire document, but there seems to be some things there that aren't consistent with how I fulfilled my role as clerk to this council.
So with that said, through you, Mr. Mayor, so in the event that you provide guidance and again, you say that the chair of a committee or a chair of council can overrule and then you ask for a point of order and point of order is not recognized, then what is sort of the role then? You provided your guidance, you're saying that he makes the ruling. If we do a point of order and you say that is a properly placed point of order and if the chair simply does not want to listen to you, simply does not want to follow our own procedural bylaw, what in effect can we do? Do we have to call security to, you know, like, what do we do? It almost feels that this is, you know, not to give the example of, you know, our southern neighbors, but, you know, this type of attitude, if this attitude is prevailing and we have laws which you provided guidance to and we challenge it and a vote is not recognized, what recourse do we have as counselors?
So I guess there are, there's two things that come to mind. One is, there is an opportunity for members, for a member to rise and to ask that the rules of procedure be suspended. And that is a rule that is set out in the procedure bylaw, but that does require a two-thirds vote, as currently stated in our procedure bylaw. So that's a mechanism that could be available to a member if they feel that they're not being heard. And we're talking in hypotheticals in terms of what a chair may rule on. The other option that may be available, which is not an immediate option, is counsel is a collective, as I said, these are council's rules. Council can change their meeting rules. There is a process to be followed, a public process, we have to give public notice before council makes a decision to change its rules. The council can change its rules by a majority vote through a public process. The council sets its own rules in line with the municipal act.
So now through you, Mr. Mayor, again to the city clerk, in a legal opinion which I seeked, it says that the chair's duty is to enforce the rules. Right from our procedural bylaw, it says the chair does not have the power under Brampton's procedural bylaw to determine whether any question motion has been dealt with in a previous resolution. The chair's powers in this regard is limited to acting on the clerk's interpretation. And that is right from our procedural bylaw. Now, I appreciate that you might interpret it A, B, or C, and I appreciate that there might be influences that want you to interpret A, B, or C. But specifically, specifically in our procedural bylaw... Who's going after the clerk? Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, this is example, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is not, this is not. I said external influences of some sort and the interpretations could be such.
We have one order, Counselor Stenson.
No, I didn't say he had an external influence. We never talked about an external influence.
So Counselor Fortini, we have one person on the floor.
We don't, I don't recognize a point of order. I don't recognize, vote on the point of order, I don't recognize this point of order. If we're going to proceed properly, again, this is what happened over the last couple of years, people jump in when they think it's appropriate. This is not, the rules of procedure, if we want to tell a point of order, I'll vote on it. I don't recognize this point of order.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, if a member rises on a point of order, it's up to the chair of the meeting to recognize that member, to give them the floor to state their point of order, depending on what's going on in the meeting. And then if, to rule on that point of order or make a decision, if it's appropriate, to make a decision. Once that decision is made, if a member disagrees with that decision, they can appeal to the majority of counsel, whether to sustain or overturn that ruling of the mayor. In this case, to my knowledge, has been no ruling made and members individually cannot object to a point of order. The point of order can be stated, it can be confirmed by the mayor as if it's a legitimate point of order or if it's not, and make a ruling. And then if there is no appeal, the meeting proceeds.
Okay, so... And you must state what the point of order is.
Okay, so Counselor Singh made his point of order. Counselor Maderos would like to speak again, is that appropriate process? Or should I respond to Counselor Singh first? Through you, Mr. Mayor, the appropriate process would be if there is a point of order to one, confirm if it is a legitimate point of order or not, and two, if it is, to rule on it, if it's, you're accepting the point of order, whatever the point may be, or saying that it's not, it's something else and we can move on. But a ruling has to be made and that ruling is subject to appeal. So in the... So it sounds like there is no point of order.
Okay, there's no point of order. Okay, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll continue. So again, in our procedural bylaw, City Clerk, it says the chair does not have the power under Brampton's procedural bylaw to determine whether any question or motion has been dealt with in previous resolution. The chair's power in this regard is limited to acting on the clerk's interpretation. Anyways, I won't belabor the point, I think we've established rules of procedure, but I will say, in terms of our procedural bylaw, the procedural bylaw, in terms of its interpretation, I appreciate everyone has different interpretations, but we have to have the same understanding of what these interpretations are. And as a counselor, what's been frustrating over the last couple of years, it seems that whoever seems to have the chair interprets rules in a different manner and there's a different understanding what those rules are. And our attempt and our discussion here is to frame the conversation and for us to understand what recourse do we have, again, to City Clerk, if we feel that members of council are not following our rules of procedure, what recourse do we have? So if a chair does not want to hold a vote, on a vote which the majority of council has requested to take the vote and the chair just says, "No," I will say, "I will not take the vote." And then incorrectly, what recourse do we have? Can we call a security guard, can we remove the chair, is there anything, any recourse that we do? What stops me if I'm chairing a meeting to simply not recognize a member and just proceed with the vote and say, "No, I don't want to listen to you"? What stops us?
Through you, Mr. Mayor and counsel, it may depend on the exact circumstances. There are duties that are set out in Section 6 of the procedure bylaw that speak to the duties of the chair and they're clear, whether it's the chair of council or a chair of a committee. And in those duties are a number of things in terms of making sure that effectively the meeting proceeds in an efficient and effective manner to uphold those principles that I spoke of earlier and to complete the agenda of the meeting. If hypothetically, if a chair deliberately is not following on a consistent basis, perhaps, the rules as clearly stated, that may be a matter that the decision body, council, can take on its own if they wish to, one, clarify the rules of procedure, and there is a process as I set out for that, or two, a member can rise and say that I'd like to suspend the rules in this particular case because there is a defect and I'd like to proceed down a certain route. So those are avenues that are available to the council or to the decision body if there is a chair that is not following proper procedure. I think, and my observation is the chairs, this term of council and previous terms of council are doing the best that they can, given the circumstances, and every situation is different. I do want to step back though and say that I think the quote that you made from that document that you provided is not necessarily a rule from the procedure bylaw. I think the procedure bylaw does not define what a reconsideration is. There is not a defined term in there saying a reconsideration is this and these are the criteria, that does not exist. It is a bit of a iterative process and based on what the circumstances are, what the decision that council previously made that it may relate to. Those are factors that go into determining whether or not a matter is a consideration. My role as clerk is, and in terms of interpreting and administering the rules, is to provide my best advice. But it's not up to the meeting chair or to council to accept that advice, the council rules and decides. So I want to say that there isn't a statement in the procedure bylaw that says unequivocally that the clerk decides if it's a reconsideration or not. In fact, the rules speak to the duties of the chair, that it's the role of the chair to either decline to put to a vote motions that infringe upon the rules under the procedure bylaw, to restrain the members when engaged in debate within the rules of order under the procedure bylaw, to enforce on all occasions the rules and observances of order and decorum amongst the members and the conduct of members. So when you look at those in its totality, it does speak to the role of the meeting chair, whoever that may be, depending on the decision body, to show, to actually exhibit some leadership in terms of making a call whether or not, when it's not clearly defined in the procedure bylaw, if it's not clearly defined, to make that call so council can move forward.
Yeah, and thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to City Clerk, again, when it speaks to providing clarity and when it speaks to proper process, process can't, and the procedural bylaw can't work in favor and then work against and have different interpretations. Unfortunately, that's been my sense, there's been confusion regarding certain procedures. I won't belabor this point. The last point, I guess I, you know, I did hear Samir speak to the council code of conduct. And through you, Mr. Mayor, the council code of conduct, was that approved by council or is that something put together by staff?
Through the chair, I was referring to the council handbook.
Yeah, and the council handbook, the council handbook, is that something that is approved by council or is that something staff prepares?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll speak to that because it was the clerk's office that put that council handbook together. It's a compilation of council decisions, procedure bylaw practices, and the intent, the first time that it was released was for this term of council. We've seen iterations of this in other municipalities and it worked well to provide a set of guidance to members of council in terms of what to expect from day-to-day matters to, it's not a proxy for the procedure bylaw, but other things that counselors may be involved in from day-to-day, from their staffing to engaging with the integrity commissioner, other staff. So it's intended to be a catch-all of things that members of council need to know. But it is based on certainly legislation, it's based on city policy, it's based on council decision and precedent, and it's based on best practices for running a municipal corporation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it is very informative, so thank you very much, but just in case there was confusion out there, it's not something that council approves, it's a guidance for us and I do appreciate it, just I do know our legal did refer to it and I just wanted to provide clarity for the public. But I do thank you, City Clerk, and I will stop here, thank you very much.
I think it's Counselor Dillon.
It's working? Oh, there we go. Sorry, Counselor Madillon, Madillon. Counselor Maderos brought this information to provide clarity and I think he's been pretty clear in what he's stated. He's got a legal opinion, I think it's fair as, I guess, a refresher for council and council members as to what the bylaw states. Just to the clerk, just real quick, and I'm not trying to belabor this discussion, I think it was pretty straightforward as to what the reason was for Counselor Maderos to bring this letter. What, to the clerk, what in particular do you disagree with or do you disagree with anything that was stated in this letter?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so I haven't read the entire letter in detail because I need to focus on the special council meeting, but just the opening paragraphs and the sort of implication that the basic premises, the starting premise is because of that section in the procedure bylaw says the clerk administers and interprets the meeting rules, that that enshrines on the clerk a duty or responsibility to decide and rule. And that's a premise that I don't agree with based on how I've practiced to be a clerk and working with other clerks. If it's said in the procedure bylaw that the clerk shall rule and shall decide, that's a different story. It does not say that in the procedure bylaw. It does not say that in the procedural bylaw. So I see my role, as I've said, to provide advice, provide objective advice to council, depending on the situation that's before council, and to interpret in terms of, in terms of advice, but also to administer the bylaw in terms of making sure that meetings proceed, effectively and efficiently as possible, making sure council is informed, making sure minutes are available to the public, and doing all the other things that are required under, under the procedural bylaw to support meetings.
So, so, so Peter, just, and I'm glad for, I'm glad you were able to kind of clarify what your, I guess your disagreement was, but are there anything else? Is there, the other points, do you disagree with them? For example, who decides who can remain in the room, points of order, process for reopening, et cetera? Do you disagree with those, or those, those seem to be pretty straightforward interpretations of the bylaw?
Through you, mister mayor. Without, again, I haven't read the whole thing, but I, just on face value, council is, is the, it's council's rules. They decide who will be in a room. Council's rule, as stated in the procedural bylaw today, is if council is in closed session, and the matter involves a city employee, it is, it is very clear that the chief administrative officer shall decide who shall be in the room, depending on, because it's a city employee that's being presumably discussed, or alluded to in some way in closed session. That's, that's a public statement in the procedural bylaw, it's a public rule. It is up to every, a council to determine its own rules in that respect, and this is a rule that this council has. Council can change that rule.
So just, just moving on, then, you had mentioned for reconsideration, council rules and decides what is a reconsideration. You had stated, chair can show leadership and make the call. So first you said council rules and decides, then you said the chair can show leadership and, and, and decide. Can the majority of council decide that they disagree? If there's some type of, again, just disagreement, can the council override the chair? Can the council go to a vote? And this is the interpretation of what is a reconsideration. I think you said reconsideration is silent, so I'm assuming that a majority of council can decide what is indeed a reconsideration or not, and then if they decide it's, it is a reconsideration, they can move forward with a two-thirds vote, is that correct?
So, through you, mister mayor. I'm going to speak in generalities, because I don't want to, I don't want to go into territory that, that may be releasing council's confidence, in terms of matters that have been discussed. But any matter that's in the procedural bylaw, that is subject to a two-thirds vote, let's take adding new business to a meeting, which is a two-thirds vote of council. If there, there is a, a basic dilemma that's caused in our procedural bylaw, and many procedural bylaws that I've seen in other municipalities, that is not explicitly explained, that if a vote is clearly stated as requiring a two-thirds majority to carry, and the chair states that, and...
Sorry, sorry, can you repeat that?
So if there is a, if, if there is a vote that's before the decision body that requires a clear two-thirds, and the stair, the stair, excuse me, the chair states that, and a member challenges that, under the pretense of challenging a ruling of the chair, with the intent of possibly overturning that by a majority vote, that would seem to go counter to the intent of council's meeting procedures, where they said, they've agreed that there's a higher task to, to do something by a two-thirds vote, but the decision body is going to move around that by just doing something by a majority vote. In the absence of something clear in our procedural bylaw, my advice will be and has been, that that doesn't seem to fulfill the intent of council's meeting procedures.
So Peter, but you had, you'd stated that, I guess you're talking, kind of talking in generalities now, in talking about interpretation. If the interpretation is challenged, is it a two, is it two-thirds, or is it a majority that can overrule what the interpretation is? When it comes to something that's vague, if it's clear as day, then understand as two-thirds. But, and we're talking about specific situations now, where it's not clearly defined.
And if it's not clearly defined, but if there is some, some guidance that's in the meeting procedures that the chair can rely on, the chair can, is empowered as the leader of the meeting to make that decision. So, as, as I said earlier, if, if the effect of the chair's decision is essentially akin to what is in the City of Toronto bylaw, which we don't have, but if, if the chair is effectively stating the rule, that is not a, a decision or a statement that, that can or should be challenged.
Sorry, it cannot be challenged?
It cannot or should be, because if the chair is simply stating a rule, a, a, a meeting rule, it kind of undermines the intent of the procedural bylaw, if every time the chair states a rule, it can be challenged by a simple majority vote by the decision body.
How often do you, have, have we seen challenges? I've not seen many. I don't think I've, maybe less than five? I don't even remember even a single challenge.
Through you, mister...
So I think that, there's really, in this term, really no precedent. But I think if there was a challenge, it might be a serious enough issue that it should go to a vote, and from what I've, what I've taken from what you've said, is that it's a majority that, that can overrule it, if they, if somebody wishes to challenge. Is that correct? Because what you just said right now, Peter, is that the chair shows leadership, and, but what I, from my interpretation of what the rules are, is that the council can overrule and decide. And if the council as a whole, who decides, you know, if, if they choose to do so, obviously we have the chair in place to keep order. And again, the chair, sorry, the chair can be challenged if somebody chooses to do so, and it goes to a vote, is that correct?
Through you, mister, mister chair, to council. Generally speaking, yes. And that's the, the point of order process, and the section 10 of the bylaw, in terms of an, an ability for a member to appeal the ruling of a chair on a point of order.
Right. So Peter, that's...
What our bylaw doesn't say, though, as I've said already, is if there is a statement, effectively a statement of the rule, it would, it would not make sense procedurally for an effective meeting, for that simply to be the statement of a rule to be overturned by a simple majority vote.
Right. So the assumption, I don't think assumptions can be made, as to what's a workaround, or if somebody's, you know, what, I, I forget the wording that you use, but essentially to kind of continuously challenge the chair. I, I'm not sure if it's fair to make assumptions that people are doing so, just to, just to, to disturb the order of the meeting. I think if somebody wishes to challenge, I think it's, it's, I would assume it's a legitimate reason, and, and I think you've been very clear that council, the majority council, has the decision, decision-making power to do so. And so, just, just, I think everybody's made their points, and just finally, I just want to ask through the chair, if I'm able to do so to councillor Madillo's, you brought this, just kind of clarify, what do you want to achieve with this letter? Just, just very briefly.
Thank you councillor Dillon. I think I've been very clear. I don't want to achieve anything with this letter, but provide my information, which I receive, in the spirit of collegiality, share it with members of council, and that is the sole purpose.
Thank you.
Next up is councillor Fertini.
Thank you, mister mayor, or Samir. A lot of times when, you know, we go in camera, you always say, "It's will of council." So we don't really have to go in camera?
Through the chair, the decision to go in camera is a decision of council. I am here to provide advice on that, but it's, it's not a decision that I make. And this has been mentioned in, in previous sessions, and I believe there was a workshop as well at the, at the region that we were all referred to, where this was discussed as well.
So we just need 50% plus one to say, "Ala camera," at will of council. We do not need two-thirds. Okay? Because as far as I see, guidance is guidance, and I get it, but you know, we can always challenge a chair. So I don't know if, if we go in camera, and we cannot take a vote because the chair does not allow it, do we have to call a special council meeting every day? Do we have to do everything out in the open from now on? Don't go in camera no more? What's your take on that? As our legal advice, I guess. You're not our, you're giving us advice, just like we got advice outside.
Through the chair, these are very interesting questions, that I, I would be happy to look into, but this is the first that these are being presented to me. So, you know, my, my initial thought is that we have a procedural bylaw. If I could analogize it to the constitution of, of the city, it's, it's a document that's intended to keep, you know, municipal democracy, the wheels of municipal democracy moving, with efficiency and effectiveness. As, as the clerk has pointed out, that it, it entails having a chair at meetings, and that the chair is the one that presides at those meetings and makes determinations. There are other avenues within, you know, the, the procedures of, of how decisions can be made, or deferred, or referred, or, or all of that stuff. And I'm happy to look into this further, but this is the, the first that I'm being referred on this, on these issues. I'd also like to understand the specific context of the questions, and I'm happy to, you know, take it away and report back.
Well, I just find it's guidance, guidance. If we have a majority council, we vote. That's how I see it. It's 50 plus one. We keep going into, in camera, two-thirds, and two-thirds, and two-thirds, we might as well do this out in the open all the time, and it's a majority vote when we go in camera. So from now on, maybe everything in camera, we should do in the open. It would be a little bit more, that way, at least it's more clarity, because we can't really take votes in there, unless we're going to be calling the special council meeting every, every day, and occupy a lot of people. So, it's like I said, I'll take and leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fertini. Next up is councillor Singh.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm looking at my 24 hours. It's legal advice and legal opinion used interchangeably, so, you know, the dance around, you know, it's opinion or advice, according to the handbook, there's not much of a difference. Actually, there is no difference, it's used interchangeably. So, outside of that, you know, I just think, we've been debating about this for an hour and 15 minutes, and the public has no idea what document we're referring to. I think it's a matter of transparency. It's not really fair for the public, and as councillors, you know, some councillors had this for a longer period than other councillors, and I think, you know, I, I appreciate sending the, the legal opinion to everybody, but getting it, you know, after the meeting has started isn't really a fair to council. So, you know, I, just for the public, I don't, I don't think it's fair. I would have liked it to be seen added as correspondence, so the public had time to look at it, you know, staff had time, but it is what it is. Last thing, I do have a question for the clerk. I, I think I did hear this, that if there is a challenge to the chair about a two-thirds, that, you know, looking at best practices, looking at City of Toronto and others, that should not be allowed, to bypass the two-thirds to challenge the chair.
Through, through you, mister, mister mayor, to members of council. So, sorry, I'm going to recap your, I think what your question was, if, if, if the vote itself is a two-thirds vote to, for that matter to carry, whatever that matter may be, and you're saying if somebody challenges the chair...
Yeah, to get around the two-thirds.
A simple majority should not be used to overturn that. That's, that's my advice as well, based on our current meeting, meeting procedures.
That's all, that's all. Thank you to the clerk, and I know a lot of people from the public, listening, are getting a lot of messages, so thanks for everybody tuned in right now as well. Thank you.
Councillor Madillo's.
Thank you very much. Lastly...
Through you, mister mayor. To the clerk, you said specifically your interpretation, and, and I thank you for providing your interpretation. I don't agree with your interpretation. I think there would be a lot of challenges out there, from a legal perspective, on some of the interpretations. But specifically, in the reference, when you talked about, nowhere in the procedural bylaw does it state that the clerk is responsible to interpret and administer the rules. It's specific in our bylaw, in your section 1.2, paragraph 2, it says, quote, "The clerk shall be responsible to interpret and administer the rules of procedure under the procedural bylaw."
Through you, mister mayor, yes, I agree, and I cited that rule earlier. But what I'm saying is, I think, from what I, I read in the first couple paragraphs of that document, and again, I haven't read the whole document, it implies that that statement confirms to the clerk the power to rule and decide. And what I'm saying is, I, I do not agree with that, and that's not the way that I've been operating as clerk. I see my role as very clear and specific, to advise, and to be the recorder of council and its decisions. It's up to council to, to decide, it's up to the chair to rule, it's up to council to rule, and to decide. That's not the role for the clerk. So that's where I see a difference of opinion, based on what I've quickly seen there, and how I interpret the procedural bylaw in terms of the role for the clerk.
Yeah, and through you, mister mayor, I thank you again for your interpretation, but again, I think by the letter of what the procedural bylaw states, it's very clear that you have to administer the rules of the procedural bylaw. And when it comes to, I do take exception when your interpretation about that, you know, based on what a two-thirds, and then because if you apply a, a, potentially a ruling, and it's a clearly stated motion, and that is a guidance that's provided by the clerk, and then the event there is a ruling against it, an interpretation of a two-thirds, then council should have the ability to refer to the procedural bylaw, specifically when there's ambiguity, and demand that the, a vote be carried on a point of order. And this is something that is up to council as a majority to decide if they want to do or not. So I will state that, because I think we have belabored the point, and I have no further questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Madillo's, and as chair, I was reserving my comments till everyone had a chance to speak. I just want to say that I know we can have passionate debates around this table, on many topics, including, in this case, our procedural bylaws. But I want to remind all members of council, that I know you all sacrifice time away from your families, you all love the City of Brampton, and then at the day, we're here because we love the City of Brampton. We would not be here on an evening, "I'd love to be putting my children to bed tonight and reading the books." I'm sure all of you have important obligations that you're away from as well. And so, sometimes, in the midst of passionate debates, it's easy to forget that we're all here because we love the city. I try my best, as chair, to administer our procedural bylaw on the guidance of our clerk and our city solicitor, who I have a great level of respect from. Sometimes, I probably rely on them too much, but it's because they have a, a level of experience around this, this table. And I think one area that might have caused a fair bit of confusion is when there is a reconsideration, whether you can have multiple speakers or one speaker, and just for the benefit of council, if the clerk could clarify, because he is the one that I got my advice from, that only the person moving the reconsideration is able to state what the reason is, and then there's no other speakers. Because I never want to offend members of council to think that I'm not recognizing them, and I don't want to talk about anything in camera, but if I ask that in a hypothetical manner, is that okay to the clerk? Okay?
Sorry?
I just want, so hypothetically, I'm asking the clerk, if someone is bringing forward a reconsideration, is it...
It's a reconsideration.
No, but, is, is it accurate that only one person can speak? Because I never want members of council to think that I'm not letting them speak, or I'm not hearing them, but hypothetically, if we were in that situation, I, I take my advice from the city clerk, and I want to know, in that hypothetical situation, what would your advice be, so all members of council understand where I get my advice?
Thank you. Through you, mister mayor, to members of council. So, yes, a reconsideration, and I'll say that, this is Brampton's procedural bylaw, which speaks to a reconsideration. It must be given through a notice of motion, it must require a two-thirds vote to reopen the question, and it must be introduced by a member who was on the prevailing side of the original vote. And the fourth precondition is, the member who moves the, the notice of motion to reopen the question shall state the reasons for making that motion. That has been interpreted, in my 15 years here, as allow one member to make a brief comment about why the reconsideration is before council, and then go to a vote. Members should be able to speak through a vote. If, if members... If, if members, if a debate is allowed to ensue on the merits of reconsideration, effectively what the decision body is doing is reconsidering the matter. So this is saying, let's have a brief statement. The notice of motion is clear on the reasons why a matter can be, is being reconsidered for the proposal by the member. Let the decision body decide by the method of the vote, by a two thirds. Otherwise, council can always get caught in a situation where they're consistently debating the merits of a reconsideration before actually getting to the vote. Now, I will say that there are other procedural bylaws out there that, that do clearly state that a reconsideration motion is debatable and there are others out there that says it's not debatable. So that's entirely within the purview of council to define its rule in that area. And my advice has been consistent that a reconsideration motion should only be the, the member bringing it forward. When they meet the other preconditions, they can make a brief statement. And then the reconsideration should happen with the vote. If it carries, then the matter's on the floor for re-debate. If it doesn't carry, council needs to move on.
And the reason I posed that question to the clerk is I want everyone around this table to know that you earned your place at this table. Your voice on behalf of your residents is important. And I would never want to diminish that voice. And the only time that we would not hear other voices is when the clerk advises that we can only have the one speaker to, to reintroduce. But I certainly have unlimited patience for any member of council that wants to share their perspective and debate, and that's why we have this democracy. I see we have two new speakers on the board. I didn't mean to belabor this, but I just wanted to have the clerk share that, because you may not have heard his advice when we were in any hypothetical meeting. Councillor Fortini, followed by councillor Dylan.
Yeah, thank you very much.
On time. To the clerk. Usually when motions are considerations by two third votes is when it's a same. Even though it speaks on, on the same and it's different causes, it's not a consideration. It speaks to different allegations, different steps, even though it speaks to the same principle of ten, but it's a whole new motion. You do not need two third votes. So if I do something now, or let's say we vote on a wall, I'm giving an example, and that loses, and we're not talking about the wall, but we're talking about the grass beside the wall, it's got nothing to do with the wall. So it's completely different. You do not need two third votes if it's different causes, even though it speaks to the same thing. Am I correct?
Through you, mister, mister chair to council. Yes, that is a possibility depending on the, how the motion is prepared and proposed and what the previous decision is. So you have to look at those specifics to, to help make that decision if it's a reconsideration or not.
My other question is, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think I did read it. Two thirds is only going, does not consider under the bureaucrat of staff. There is no two third votes under municipal act or under a procedural bylaw. When it comes to staff, there is no two third votes. Two third votes is what we have here. If I'm doing a road, it failed, I cannot reopen it. But when it comes to bureaucrats or the eight chair matters or staff, there is no such thing as two third votes. Or else what's the sense of having a council here if we need a majority of eight people, seven, fifty plus one?
So through you, mister, mister mayor. Yes, the municipal act doesn't, doesn't specify that I, that I recall in terms of what's a two thirds versus a majority vote. That is entirely up to council, consistent with legislation in terms of defining its rules. And this council has defined certain circumstances that are two thirds votes and, and many others that aren't. Yes.
So we, it's fifty plus one. You do not need, if the merit is changed, you do not need two third votes. If he speaks on a different whole motion from the first time motion, it's just new business, new consideration. It's not considered two third votes. It speaks of a whole different issue.
If the motion is different, then it, it isn't necessarily a two thirds vote. And I, I can tell you, and members probably know, that every time a motion is placed, regardless of what committee and what meeting, we're looking at it with the view of, is this a matter the council has already decided? So we have to take that into account because our obligation is to provide advice to the decision body in that regard. So we do look at that.
Okay, you, done councillor Fortini? Okay, councillor Dylan.
Thank you. Feels like a workshop at the beginning of the term. So I think it's a good debate that we're having and I guess it's a good conversation. I guess a lot of the people who are watching kind of get an idea of some of the rules and procedures. Just one last question for you, Peter. If there, there are, I guess just a yes or no is fine. There are some situations where it's, it's night and day, yes and no, that something is a reconsideration. Is that correct? Like there are situations where you absolutely know this is a reconsideration. Let's just say, for example, we pass to name a street after somebody. And that passes with the majority of council. It comes back and somebody wants to say, no, I think we made a mistake. I want to reconsider this. That's night and day, yes and no. We, we have to have two thirds. Is that correct?
I would say yes, and there, there is precedent for that.
Right. And, and so i- if there's a situation where hypothetically I'm speaking now, if somebody was to bring a motion, submit or present a motion and the clerk states that it's a, it's a brand new motion and the chair of a meeting says, no, this is a reconsideration. At that point, I guess right now it's up, left up to interpretation. At that point, does a majority of council decide if it's a reconsideration or not?
Through you, mister chair. That's where our, our rules do not define who makes the decision on a reconsideration. So by default, it, it does rest with the, the chair of the meeting to help make that call based on advice that they may receive from the clerk, they may receive from members in, in consultations.
Can the majority of council, if they challenge the chair, they can overrule them?
And that's, and that's the exact dilemma that we've been talking about is it, it, it seems odd, I will say, and this is my opinion, that a, a vote.
So we have one, okay, councillor Mederos.
Just councillor Mederos.
Councillor Mederos, we have one speaker at a time, councillor Dylan.
Through you, mister, mister mayor. I'll use, I'll use a different choice of where it's, it seems. It may not seem right that if a rule is, it's a two thirds vote to achieve that outcome and an appeal is made of the decision that that is a two thirds vote to achieve that outcome, to overturn that by a majority. And my, my advice has been consistent that that doesn't seem to make sense in terms of fulfilling the intent of the rules of the decision body and having council move forward. If council wants to define its rules differently, council's entitled to do that.
Maybe just my question wasn't clear. If, if a clerk in any municipality, let's just, no, not any municipality, Brampton. If the, if the, if the clerk was to state that he feels a motion that a councillor brings is a, is not a reconsideration. And so, you know, let's just say it was some other clerk. I'm not naming any names, anybody, could be anybody. Hypothetical question here. If the clerk states that it's a, it's not a reconsideration and the chair says it is a reconsideration, you know, the clerk's role, I think, as, as per what councillor Mederos had outlined in the letter, is for advice. And so, and if the chair disagrees, you're saying that it's a two thirds or are you saying that it's a majority that decides? Like I, I think it has to be clear, there's some point, situation where a clerk would be in that situation. What would, what would your advice at that point say? At that point be, sorry?
Through you, mister chair. My advice would be the deference is always given to the chair of the meeting because that person is a member of the decision body.
Right. So just, that's, that's a good instance. But can the, can the majority of council overrule the decision? Of the chair?
And my advice has been that generally speaking, that may occur depending on the circumstances, but if, if the, the actual vote itself that's put to the, put to the question is a two thirds vote, then it, it, it would seem that it is not consistent with council's rules that a two thirds vote can be overturned by a majority vote.
Right. So I think, so you're saying that a, and something that's not a reconsideration, a vote to determine it. So you have two different sides, the chair and a clerk are, are, are talking about the merits of whether it's a reconsideration. I don't think that's a, the question is not a reconsideration per se, but you're saying that it's two thirds is required. Thanks, that's all the questions. Mister mayor.
Thank you councillor Dylan. Councillor Mederos.
Thank you. And first of all, I want to apologize, city clerk. I shouldn't have provided that out first and I do apologize. I guess, you know, go through you, mister mayor. To the clerk, on the statement of that it would seem odd, does it not seem odd that a properly placed motion, which you've provided or clerk has provided guidance, that it's a properly placed motion, that the chair can arbitrarily override, in this case, any motion we bring, then a chair can simply say it requires two thirds? Because that's a ruling of the chair. Is that not odd that majority of councils will, the majority of this council cannot move if, because we're now, we're hijacked by a chair of a meeting, be it a chair of a committee or being a chair of council, who simply states it's two thirds? Arbitrarily decides it's two thirds? Is that not odd? Is that not odd that majority of council duly elected that now arbitrarily on any interpretation? So, and, and just speaking specifically to what the mayor stated in terms of saying that during a reconsideration one speaks, that's the assumption that it is a reconsideration. So that assumption is that ruling, effectively, then what are we doing here? It's exactly councillor Fortini's point. What are we doing here as councillors? If the will of council is not here, if the will of council does not have, majority of council does not have a will in this municipality, what are we doing here all as councillors? And this is at the heart of the question and the heart of the issue, which I hope that going forward proceeding, that the majority and will of council is respected and that we're not simply put to a side where our vote does not matter, our vote does not count because there's an, almost an authoritarian rule that their interpretation is what the interpretations of land of the law, which is not correct. Our procedural bylaw states, these are the procedures. You may not like it. You may say it's whatever interpretation, but however, specifically when the bylaw is silent, it's majority rule. Council makes that determination. So the, the, I find it odd, and through you, mister mayor, the, the assumption that, again, it would be odd that we challenge under point of order, but it's a procedure that is there, regardless if you, if it's odd or not odd. It's the procedure that is allowed, forfeited to this council. And, and this is what, is at the heart of the matter going forward. And this is why we brought this issue. Because arbitrarily, what are we doing here? All of members of council, it's almost we're disenfranchised. It's being run in a, in a manner which is not subject to this municipality. I've been here not as long as many, I don't know, probably as long as others, but we've never encountered this situation. It's not possible. We haven't encountered these situations that we've only encountered here. And, and, and this is not my interpretation. It's just, you know, this idea that the chair can arbitrarily rule as the way he wants and make any arbitrary, and then we can't challenge it, is not the notion, is not the spirit of the procedural bylaws, not the spirit of the municipal act, it's not the spirit of democracy as a majority rules. Okay? And, and I will end it at that, but this is not the way that a, a, a chair should have this. So effectively, as a chair of a committee, if I don't want to recognize any motion, I will determine the way I fit to determine. This is not the way to properly run. That's not what we run this municipality. And essentially, this is what I keep hearing. It's a presumption, I haven't even, you know, what, what the funny thing is, we haven't even seen motions and there's a presumption that a person can rule or the chair can rule as he sees fit, determining that it's two thirds if he sees fit. Never mind what councillors feel, never mind majority of council feel, that's fine. And, and, and this is at the heart of the matter, why we have this meeting. Taking away from our family, taking away, putting the spectacle for all the residents, having everyone see, again, there's Brampton again. You know, this doesn't happen anywhere else.
Thank you councillor Mederos. Next up is councillor Bowman.
Thank you very much.
Through you, mister chair. Sorry, I'm on the run.
There we go, that's better. Sorry about that. Mister clerk, when, when there's a missing piece in our procedural bylaw, do we refer back to Borno's Rules of Order?
Through you, mister chair. Yes, there is a provision in our procedural bylaw that allows us to refer back to Borno's for guidance if necessary.
Okay. And that's, that's in our procedural bylaw number sixteen, isn't it?
That's correct.
Matters not provided for?
Yeah.
Okay. So if there's nothing provided in our bylaw or if it's vague the way it's provided in the bylaw, if we were to consult Borno's Rules of Order, in, in the instance that we're talking about right now, where the decision of a chair differs from the advice of a clerk, for example, under Borno's Rules of Order, we are allowed to overturn the ruling of the chair? Are we not?
Through, through you, mister mayor. I don't think it speaks to specifically that situation. It, it does speak to generally, which is the principle that is still in our procedural bylaw, that if the chair makes a ruling on something, that it may be challenged, it may be appealable by, by the body in terms of the ruling. And, and that is consistent with Borno's. But if, if you're saying that there's a specific reference in Borno's that speaks to the advice of the clerk being, or, or the procedural advisor, however it's defined in Borno's, being different from the chair and the chair making a ruling. I don't think it's that specific in Borno's. If you have a page reference, I, I could go to that. I have Borno's right here in my.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at Borno's Rules of Order to glance.
Yeah.
And it specifically says where there's, you know, anybody can vote to overturn the ruling of the chair by simply saying, I challenge the chair on, may, may interrupt the speaker, yes? You must be seconded, yes? Is the motion debatable? Yes? Is the motion amendable? No. What's required? Simple majority.
Through you, mister chair. Yes. So let's say a point of order is raised on a motion that a member introduces a main motion and another member introduces an amendment. And the chair may rule that the amendment itself is not in order because it's, it's contrary to the main motion. That may be something that's subject to an appeal by a member of the decision body and that would be, as the rules in Borno's and in the procedural bylaws spell out, could be overturned by a simple majority vote. But the vote itself for which the question is being raised is a simple majority vote. And I think the difference that we're talking about here is the, the, the voting in consideration that's being talked about hypothetically is a reconsideration, which is clearly a two thirds vote. That's, you know, that's not debatable. It's a two thirds vote in council's meeting rules. And the dilemma, as I've said, that, that exists is, does it make sense for a decision body to be guided by a threshold vote that is a two thirds to achieve an outcome by that being changed by a simple majority vote?
Yeah, and, and I, I respect that, Peter, absolutely. But it, I look at it going back the opposite direction as well. Is it, is it democratic for any chair, including myself when I chair, to rule on something without taking the advice of the clerk, to make a ruling that would automatically click in the two thirds majority, shutting out the democratic voice of the majority of council? That doesn't make sense to me either. So I, I can see it both ways. And, and I believe that's what councillor Mederos was, was trying to point out as well, that, you know, under, under Borno's Rules of Order, there are fundamental rules and guidelines that allow us to challenge a decision of the chair. And whether that chair is making a decision that it, something that requires two thirds vote, or whether that decision simply requires a majority, that is still a decision that that chair is making that under Borno's Rules is challengeable. And that's, that's the only thing that I can glean from that. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Again, it's, it's interpretation, but, you know, if we're going to follow rules, then it is in the rules that, that we have the right to do that. So, thank you, mister clerk.
Councillor Fortini.
Thank you. Last time. We challenge here, our bylaws are almost the same as the region. We challenge the Chair at the region all the time, and we only need 50 plus one. So, I don't see, I understand what you're saying, a consideration, and when a Chair says, well, you need two-thirds, but if the subject is different, it's got nothing to do with what we did at the beginning. Because if that's the case, any staffer could just take three, four councillors aside, and they could do what they want. We might as well go home and save taxpayers $1.5 million a year, because we got no say here. So, I want to do, I don't know if we have to do a workshop on procedural bylaws, maybe even tomorrow after council stay here all night to remind people what it is, because I've been reading, and it says right here, it doesn't, two-thirds do not concern for staff. We can't keep doing two-thirds for staff, on staff, it's got nothing to do with our HR matters, and it's not the same. Because at the end of the day, they could just run the city and take three councillors aside, we need always two-third votes. Why are the other seven councillors here? Unless we just get paid, you know, and say, hey, we love our city, and just get a paycheck, because we really don't love our city, if that's the case. Everyone has a say at this table equally. And I still believe it's 50 plus one. And if the Chair keeps saying two-thirds, two-thirds, well, when I chair planning, or Martin says, I'm sorry, you need two-thirds. All the time. We're not allowed to challenge the Chair, and they make the rules. So, I don't see it as consideration, if the matter is completely different. Something's done, it's new, it's a new matter, that means it's a new motion, and it's a new motion. You can't go back and say, well, we already did this once before, yeah, but the optics and things different than it was from back then. And you actually said last time it was different, but then the Chair overruled it, and we're not allowed to speak. So I think these meetings from now on, Samir, as you said, they should be out in the open, it's considered of council, so every enclosed meeting should be out in the open. Then we might find it a little bit better. And it's, you always said it's will of council. So as of tomorrow, maybe from now on, or this one here, we're going to take a vote, I don't want to go in camera, we do it out in the open, and see who has the courage to vote, out in the open. Thank you.
I was just going to say, I know this is a, the rules are normally that you speak twice, and I've been very generous, because I don't want people to lose an opportunity to ask something that they're passionate about, but I just want to remind everyone, this is, we're all beyond, so Counsel Mederos.
Thank you, recognizing your generosity. Mayor, I'd just like to move a motion then, effective immediately, and essentially, I would like a review of our procedural bylaw, pending on public posting period, City Clerk. So.
Tomorrow.
So I would like, no, but I would like to move a motion that I review our procedural bylaws, and follow, I think there's a public posting period, et cetera.
Can you draw a Saturday and Sunday, this is going to take a long time.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, so the procedural bylaw says if council wishes to amend its procedural bylaw, there's a public process to be followed, and so there has to be an opportunity for the public to comment in front of council on the proposed changes. Public notice has to be given with a minimum five days' notice. So generally speaking, for a Wednesday meeting, we try to give web notice, we don't have to publish it in the newspaper, we give web notice at five days, which is a Thursday before the scheduled Wednesday meeting, or whenever the meeting is called. But it has, we have to be clear what the proposal is in terms of the amendment to the procedural bylaw, because we usually put that, we do put that in the notice, so the public is clear on what the proposed amendment is, and so is council when it comes to time for a vote.
So I would like to move that we remove, it's funny, because in municipalities like Mississauga, they don't have the two-thirds reconsideration, so I would like for us to amend our procedural bylaw, and take away the two-thirds consideration, and also the language regarding having to be on the winning team to ask for reconsideration. I know other municipalities have done, do not use the two-thirds anymore, and so I would like to move that amendment.
Can we have it on the 13th, Peter?
And a recorded vote, please.
That's more than five days, actually, or the 13th is fine.
Mr. Chair? To the City Solicitor?
Through the Chair, I just wanted to clarify a point, I think it was suggested, and I apologize if I misunderstood, it was suggested that I have said that all matters should be out in the open, that was, my comment was that it's council's prerogative to, with respect to what we go into closed, but it's my job to provide advice on that. So just, I just want to clarify that for the record, and.
Thank you.
Counselor Paleshi.
Oh, Counsel Mederos, you first.
Yeah, no, thank you, sorry, just, Peter's the right up, my apologies, so again, it's to remove the two-thirds for reconsideration, and also around the language of having to be on the winning side.
Prevailing side. And if we can bring that back as soon as possible, City Clerk, and I'll look towards your guidance when, as soon as possible.
The 13th.
Okay.
The 13th, Peter, that's five days.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, just for, in terms of meetings, so we have council tomorrow, there's Committee of Council on the 16th.
No, the 13th, we'll do it on the 13th, it's five days.
So, is the request then to call a special meeting?
Yeah.
The 13th is Sunday.
So we'll do it on the Monday, well, so we can aim for. So, the 13th. Counsel Mederos has the floor.
13th.
Thank you, City Clerk, so when from your timelines could we come back to consider this?
Through, sorry, I'm just trying to communicate with Charlotte, so we have the motion correct. So theoretically, if council were to pass a motion tonight to request that the procedural bylaw be amended, we could give public notice on Thursday for the February 16th Committee of Council meeting, to allow an opportunity for the public to come speak. Then Committee would make a recommendation at that meeting, and that recommendation would go to council for approval, and presuming if council wishes to proceed with the amendment, an amendment to the procedural bylaw on March 2nd, because there is no meeting the week of February 21st, because it's Family Day week, and council in its meeting schedule has decided not to have meetings that week, so it would be March 2nd.
So, and through you, Mr. Mayor, unless there's a call of a special council meeting, if there's a petition to call a special council meeting after the five-day period, or after Committee of Council's consideration?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's a possibility. The thing we'd have to be aware of is probably there needs to be certainty in terms of, for the public, if it is, if there is public notice given for the 16th, for an opportunity for the public to come speak and provide comment on the proposed changes, probably some certainty about when a special meeting, if a special meeting is called, instead of going on the March 2nd meeting, because there may be members of the public that want to participate in that special meeting if one is called to deal with that. So in terms of just the notice provisions, that would have to be, that's something that probably should be considered.
So then if we can aim for the 22nd, the day after Family Day, on the Tuesday, for a special council meeting?
So through you, Mr. Chair, yes, and I guess then the question would be, calling the special council meeting can be done of, one of three ways. It can be done through a call by the Mayor, it can be done by a call of the majority of members of council, as was experienced tonight, or it could be done through a resolution of council.
So I'd like to move it as a resolution of council for the 22nd, special council meeting at 7:00 PM, to give opportunities of members of the public who might want to delegate on amending the procedural bylaw, to remove the two-thirds requirement of a reconsideration, and the language around being on the prevailing side. And if that's for a recorded vote, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, Counselor Paleshi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's almost like Groundhog Day, talking about the rules of procedure and making any changes, and I guess that's because currently, Mr. Clerk, is our current procedural bylaw under review now? Is it going through that review process?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, yes, there is a procedural bylaw review committee, which is really a subcommittee of the Governance and Council Operations Committee, that is in effect, and has effectively carriage right now for reviewing the procedural bylaw. And we've received comments from members of council last year, we're looking at procedural bylaws from other comparable municipalities across Ontario, and we're coming up with proposed amendments to council's procedural bylaw for consideration, probably within the next month or two.
Next month or two?
Yeah.
Is when the entire review of the procedural bylaw is going to be protracted to council for a decision?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, when a possible draft bylaw for consideration can come back to the Committee for consideration, yes.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Clerk. A follow-up question would be, typically in, when council's dealing with matters, or committees are dealing with matters, and it comes under one particular committee's purview, is it normally the council usually sends that item to those committees for that committee to provide comments?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, if there is a committee established for that, then that would make sense, and that would sort of be the sort of practical common sense approach, is to send a matter to a committee that has that jurisdiction currently.
And you being the clerk in the office that is really taking care of a lot of the procedural bylaw review, do you think that, is it, would it be your recommendation that council refer this to the procedural bylaw committee to come into the whole entirety of the review process?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that is a consideration that council can take, because the one thing with the procedural bylaws, you want to make sure that the rules fit together, because we don't want rules that have unintended consequences. So that is an option that council can proceed with, is to consider this through the procedural bylaw review committee, which is already established. But at the end of the day, council is supreme, so if council wishes to deal with it now, later, whatever, that's council's decision.
For sure, absolutely, it's council's decision. We've had, we've had two review committees since the procedural bylaw committee has been struck?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think there's been three, if not four.
I'm the Chair, I should know that, my apologies. Three, you're saying?
I believe there's three since it was established in April of 2021.
Okay, the amount of work that has gone into the committee and the timeline that your office has put together, is, do you have dedicated people that are assigned to that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, no, it's primarily myself and the deputy clerk, and conferring with staff.
And do you have a lot of time on your hands, Peter?
It's a very busy year, through you, Mr. Chair.
Peter, are you at full complement in your office?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe we generally are, we have a few that were backfilling positions, but we're near full complement, yes.
Okay. So I, and I think, I don't know, I don't recall supporting when we first put on the, on the, a member had to be on the prevailing side to overturn a decision. I know we did it in the 2000, I know we did it last term, and then we carried it forward this term, and it was last term for the first time ever that the city, so I don't have any really thoughts on that, if council felt that they wanted to remove that, I think I could support that, I can't remember why, if I did support it before, and I never really, really, truly loved it, so I don't have a problem with that. That being said, you know, we typically, when we make, I think this is a big decision, and it's obvious that there's six members of council that want to move this forward, I respect that, six members of council can do as they wish with respect to this, and there's not much anybody else can say to that. But I think that, given the world that we live in today with COVID, and the amount of strains that staff have on them currently, I think the proper process would be to send it to the review committee. I'll call for a meeting as soon as you want me to, as soon as I'm able to, to make sure that we do have those comments that are provided. We do give staff an opportunity to look at what we're asking them, to look at other municipalities. I know Mississauga, Counsel Mederos, absolutely right, Mississauga got rid of their two-thirds for some of those matters, and I don't, but I don't know what other municipalities have or have not done that, so I would request that staff do some work on this, but I also want to identify for all members of council, it's not an easy task for us to ask staff to do this. It's very difficult, labor-intensive in what you're asking them to do, not only make these changes, but to call for a public meeting as well. So my request is to refer the motion to the procedural bylaw committee for comment, and the future public process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counsel Williams.
Thank you, through the Chair, so referral motion is.
A second, the Clerk is giving me some guidance.
Through you, Mr. Chair, so Counselor Paleshi has moved referral to the procedural bylaw review committee of Counsel Mederos's motion, which we require a second, so now we're in a referral debate, so members can speak to the merits of the referral, but the vote that will be taken first will be whether or not to refer this.
Do you want to speak on the merits of the referral, Counsel Williams?
Yes, I think, you know, I was actually coming on the board to second Counsel Mederos's motion, I'm worried that referring this through the procedure committee is only going to add more work to our staff's plate. Right now, we are a council that's making a decision, and are able to debate this right now, and provide our comment, and I think right now we could be able to get this completed and move the motion, call for a special meeting, usually that's just a notice on our council agendas for anybody who wants to comment, and they can do so. So I wouldn't support a referral, I think right now we can get this, you know, take a vote on it, and I'd be happy to second Counsel Mederos's motion if the referral motion does not succeed. Thank you.
Counselor Fortini, do you want to speak to the referral?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor, and I guess Counsel Williams said exactly what I said, I'm not going to support the referral. You know, we keep blaming COVID on everything here. This is an important issue, we only need five days, and we only have to work on this portion, we don't have to work on all the procedural bylaws, so it really is not taking a lot of work. So I'm not going to support the referral, and I was going to second that Counsel Mederos's motion also. Thank you.
To the City Solicitors, you had some guidance to offer?
Yes, through the Mayor, I'm just going to be careful in what I say, because I don't want to get into the area of legal advice, but if I can make a friendly suggestion, it seems, I have some nervousness about ad hoc changes to the procedural bylaw, because as I mentioned before, it's a fundamental document that governs the operations of democracy in the city, so I think council should take a careful and comprehensive approach. It's easy to make a change to try to fix one problem and have unintended consequences, so that would be my suggestion, and I think the, we have a procedural bylaw committee, and they are scheduled to be working on this. I think a, there were other issues that were previously raised by some members of council about our procedural bylaw, and I think it's probably a more appropriate forum for that careful and comprehensive consideration that I would suggest. Thank you.
Okay.
Counsel Sane, were you on the list too?
No, I said I'm second.
Oh, second, okay. Counselor Santos.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, I think that the referral is appropriate, since there is something already going on and in place, and this, as per what the City Solicitor has shared, changing this is quite a significant change, and a significant amendment to what would be equivalent to the Constitution, as you described as an analogy, that guides the decisions at council and procedures at council. So I do support the referral, but I was wondering if Mr. Clerk or City Solicitor, if you could explain why the two-thirds vote is important, and why it's significant in terms of the guiding principle, why it. the guiding principle, why it exists as part of a procedural bylaw in terms of its intention.
Yeah, I just give it. To the referral? Do you consider that speaking to the referral?
Or framed differently, or framed differently.
Yeah, so maybe we'll save that for when there is the public media on this. If that's okay, Counselor Santos.
Okay, that sounds good. But yes, I will be supporting the referral because it is my understanding that this is definitely a significant change and based on our discussion today, trying to create a 50 plus one lower threshold. There's a reason why there's a two thirds threshold in order to protect the integrity of the procedures and the way that meetings and decisions are made on council. Thank you.
Counselor Maderos?
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly to those last comments, I would say regarding the lower threshold, when the city of Mississauga, I wouldn't suggest that they have a lower threshold than City of Brandon.
Just like I said to Counselor Santos, this would be.
Well, then, but they were speaking to the the threshold. So I would like to speak to the threshold as well.
I know, but I just said to Counselor Santos, you should save those comments for the for the day of.
But I'd like to, okay.
So I'll give you the same guidance I gave Counselor Santos.
At the city of Mississauga should be as great. I would never go to criticizing my neighbors to the south.
I think that should be.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
The day of the debate. Okay, we have a vote requested for a recorded vote on the referral.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Recorded vote's been requested on the motion, excuse me, the referral motion from Counselor Palessi to refer the Counselor Maderos's motion seconded by Counselor Williams, as shown on the screen, to the procedural bylaw review committee. All in favor of the referral motion, please indicate. Counselor Santos? That's a yes. Counselor Visante? That's a yes. Counselor Willens?
No.
That's a no. Counselor Palessi? That's a yes. Counselor Bowman? It's a no. Counselor Maderos? It's a no. Counselor Williams?
No.
It's a no. Counselor Fortini?
No.
That's a no. Counselor Singh? That's a yes. Counselor Dillon? That's a no. Mayor Brown? That's a yes. The referral motion does not carry. The vote is five to six. So through you, Mr. Mayor, then the motion is shown on the screen is the Counselor Maderos's motion, seconded by Counselor Williams. That a review be taken of the procedure bylaw and a notice of motion be listed for consideration, special meeting. Special meeting in council will be convened on the 22nd following the provision of public notice on the matter. Such motion to include the following proposed changes, to amend the procedure bylaw, to do two things, to remove the two thirds threshold vote on any matters within the procedure bylaw and for a member to to have voted on the prevailing side of a resolution. Sorry, can't see it there. In a reconsideration motion to be removed from the procedure bylaw requirement. Through you, Counselor Plessy, are you asking a question if the last vote lost?
I'm asking if that's the ruling of the mayor, the last vote on the referral loss.
Our, so I I I declared the vote and usually it may be the mayor if it was a recorded vote or or another vote, but nobody has said anything, so we're moved on to other business. So my advice would be that the vote carried.
But usually typically it's the mayor that rules on on the vote after it's voted.
A chair would not rule on a vote. A chair would.
Mayor would state.
Would state the vote.
Right.
Yes.
And would that be considered the ruling of the mayor?
No, because I would not, in my view, because that that's a legitimate vote that occurred.
Thank you, Mr.
To me, it wouldn't be a matter that is subject to a ruling.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to members of council, a recorded vote has been requested on the Counselor Maderos's motion seconded by Counselor Williams. All in favor, please indicate. Counselor Santos? That's a no. Counselor Visante? That's a no. Counselor Willens?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Palessi? That's a no. Counselor Bowman? That's a yes. Counselor Maderos? That's a yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Fortini?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Singh? That's a no. Counselor Dillon? That's a yes. Mayor Brown?
No.
That's a no. That motion carries six to five.
Okay, that takes us to our next item, which is motion request the disclosure of closed meeting minutes and recording of the council meeting held. Is that not 4.2?
Through you, Mr. Mr. Mayor. So Counselor Maderos, when the petition was filed, it included four items. The second item was the closed session item. So we've placed the the closed session item under item six, I believe it is, on our agenda. Yeah, so we listed the three items in public session. So that just changed the the numbering.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. Counselor Maderos, this is your item? Yes, Mr. Mayor. So regarding the meeting of enclosed on January 26, and I'd like to move a motion that the video of the full meeting be provided to all members of council. Counselor Plessy?
There's no video of the meeting of January 26, 2022. Unless I'm being videotaped without my knowledge, there's no video.
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, then the recording, I understand it would be the video of council, which was open session, and I think we can get that on our YouTube channel. And then I would like the recording of the in camera be available to all members of council. And the January 26 enclosed item regarding identifiable individuals, that was the item that we referred to, that was the in camera related to the prior matters. Okay, Counselor Maderos has a motion on the floor? Record a vote, please, as well.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, just for some clarity on this proposed motion and Charlotte, Counselor Dillon is has identified to be the secondar. So the video of the full open session meeting of January 26 be provided to members of council. So that link is available right now to members on the 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 city's website. It's available to anybody to see. And the audio recording, the second part of the closed session of the meeting held on January 26, I think, just to be specific, unless it is general, Counselor Maderos, I think you had mentioned a specific item, which I believe would have been item 19.10 on that January 26 closed session.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. I would do the whole closed session.
Sorry, you do.
All of the closed session.
The entire closed session? Okay.
Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just wish to advise council that there is a closed meeting protocol and in particular, there's a closed meeting audio recording protocol since council instituted audio recordings of closed session back in 2016, I believe it was. So audio recordings are available for members to review or to listen to in the clerk's office. We we the the policy basically says it will not be provided to anybody. But it is council's policy. So if council wishes to decide something different, that's council's prerogative to do that. It is. It would be provided to a closed meeting investigator should there be an investigation at any point. But generally, the 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 protocol says that it's not to be provided to any members of council, any members of staff. But if that's council's will, then we will provide that to audio recording to all members of council.
Yeah, and thank you, Peter. And just to add on to that, it should be available so that each individual counselor, they can seek legal advice if they so want to. So to be able to disclose the in camera to seek legal advice if they so request.
Through through the chair, I find that the disclosure to third parties to be problematic, given our rules around closed meeting information.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to our legal solicitor. When illegal, if I'm seeking a legal opinion and I need to speak to him and out of confidentiality, I need to be able to share details on an in camera meeting. So I would like the ability, in my understanding that this is a common practice, that we get the disclosure of in camera. So I can be able to share and get a legal advice. If you suggest that we provide a motion today requesting legal advice as a council and send the in camera portion to a solicitor, a third party solicitor of our choice, then I will take your guidance.
Through the chair, I think providing it individually to each counselor to be able to then get their own individual legal advice is problematic and may potentially waive the confidentiality, but also privilege. If council was to engage, to act by the will of council to engage legal counsel, then you would have greater protections.
Okay, thank you. So I will revise the motion as stated, Peter. So essentially is to make is for us to be able to seek external legal advice. So one would be to provide a copy of in camera recording to each member of council. And the second would be to get external legal advice regarding the in camera session. And then I would expect the city solicitor could provide us with some names or we could determine who we would want to seek external advice on the proceedings of in camera. Thank you very much. Is that clear enough, City Clerk?
Through the chair, sure. Yeah, but this is what the city solicitor's office is here for.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got a big speaker's list. Counselor Palessi, followed by Counselor Singh, Dillon, Palessi, and Fortini. I'll hand you down seven 12 as well. When do we start this item? Okay, if I'm on, I'm on. Thank you. I would like to make an amendment to the motion. And I'm not sure if Counselor Willens or Counselor, no, Counselor Willens, Counselor Maderos will make this a, take this as a friendly or not. I would like that the audio recording of the closed session closed session of the meeting held on January 26, 2022 not be provided to Counselor Michael Palessi. Is that a friendly?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Singh.
I'm I'm going. I'm going off memory, but I think there was a lot of things discussed that they regarding properties and and other things that I don't think should be released like that to legal or anything else. So I understand the motion, understand the intent. I'm not going to try to stop it, but we should clarify the section if you want, because, you know, there's something in my new Counselor Dillon's area, for example, there is. If I'm going off memory, but I remember and I don't think those should be potentially out there like that. So I would ask that you stay specific to the items because I don't think that's healthy. I think third party stakeholders, there's LPAT matters in there, you know, it could put us at some serious legal risk. So that would be my suggestion, whatever items you want, just clarify them in there.
Would that be a friendly amendment to remove the LPAT matters?
LPAT, there's other legal issues there.
I think the whole enclosed proceedings has to be, and since this is council resolution, if it does pass and our city solicitor is quarterbacking it, then I think he can provide the guidance of what is relevant. Maybe when it comes back and we can speak to the scope of the enclosed.
But maybe it's not, it's relevant for you more than him, right? What's your intention? Maybe clarify because, you know, I could tell you, I I I remember some of the matters in our area, like it can close, like you don't need to put those on this motion. If you're specific, I think it would be better.
Again, I appreciate your comments. All the enclosed meetings, I think we have a determination that other members will speak, but we feel and I feel that the whole enclosed session and recording is important for context. And I'm happy for the city solicitor to listen to those in camera recording and come back with guidance at our next, be it committee meeting or next council meeting. And you can provide us that guidance of what can be shared or not shared.
So you're looking for staff to report back then?
I'm happy for the city solicitor to provide that guidance.
Yeah, that would be important.
Sure. I think I think the intent is the broader discussion. We feel that the, I feel that the meeting of January 26 wasn't properly adjourned. I think that the confirming bylaw, there was not quorum and that is my consideration and hopefully by making this tape available and seeking legal advice to the validity of having quorum and also what transpired in voting procedures, I think it's important for us to receive that legal advice as a whole of council.
Yeah, I know. I'm not against it. I'm just saying it would, if you're more specific, I think it'd be helpful. There's things in my area.
So the city solicitor, if it gives you enough time next committee of council, if that's direction, if you can report back on what you think is appropriate and not appropriate to share with your external legal, which you will come back with some options regarding the validity of that meeting or not. I think that language is flexible enough.
Yeah. And I I I don't need a copy as well, if the Counselor Singh, please.
Is that a friendly amendment to exclude Counselors?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor? Through through the chair, I there was a lot of content in closed session, including discussions that were confidential, involving third parties. That is, we don't have the authority to release third party information. We are subject to confidentiality agreements. My suggestion, if you would like to go down this road, would to break, would be to break this up into a two-stage process. You obtain the recordings and then have a a later motion on what you would like to disclose externally and what the questions are that you would like to ask.
So to the city solicitor, in the hopes of trying to move this meeting on, what Counselor Maderos suggested was that you could come back at the committee of council and say what would not be appropriate to disclose. And so I think that's, so we you'd have the next week to figure that out. So to be clear, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city solicitor, we want to determine that the meeting of January 26 was properly, that the confirming bylaw was passed properly, that there was quorum throughout the meeting. So I think there's parts up to a certain vote, which some members feel that there was no quorum. We saw that outside in camera, outside in council. There was a half hour break for quorum. We challenged the fact that a confirming bylaw could have been passed with out quorum and we were seeking legal advice. So you can come back at committee of council and provide. So you can come back at committee of council and provide us with that scope on how to get a legal opinion if in fact it did, January 26, we did pass a confirming bylaw with quorum. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just, I'm okay, yeah. So you're gonna do, work with the solicitor?
Yep.
And that was my only concern, and also please add my name. And sorry, last thing, the recording, is it gonna be an online release to everybody, or will it be USB?
It would be at the discretion of each counselor if they want. So the counselor can speak to, I guess, Peter Fay or if they wanna listen to it. But you're saying that that exists right now, doesn't it, City Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if we're talking about the recording of the open session of the meeting of January 26, that recording is available now online to anybody who wishes to view it under the Meetings and Agendas webpage for that particular meeting. In terms of the audio recording, that's, that is currently secured within the city clerk's office for a closed session.
So I guess I will, I'll leave it to you to determine how you wanna share it with each member of council.
You know, if we're talking about USB, password-protected, like, you know.
So, so without getting ahead of ourselves, Counselor Singh, just to probably be helpful.
All of that can be provided by the city solicitor at committee of council.
Whatever risks is.
Sorry, through, through, through the chair, could you, could you clarify what is being asked? Because the, the issue, there, there is a legitimate issue about how we are going to provide these to the different members of council.
Yeah, that's from you to report back to committee of council.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Singh. Counselor Dylan.
Thank you. Is my, is my turn? There it is. Quick question, just as per Counselor Maderos. He wants the legal considerations with respect to conduct of the meeting. What, what are the steps to the clerk that council has if there's any issues that they do have? What, what are the next steps involved?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, was that question to me?
Yes, you were.
Sorry, can you repeat it? I, I heard you start by saying to the city solicitor.
Oh, sorry. So if there's issues with, so the, the motion's asking to provide external opinion with regard to the legal considerations with respect due to conduct of the meeting. What, what, what are, what are the options that if there's, if the council feels like there's an issue that with, that occurred in the meeting? What are the next steps, the options that they have?
So through you, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna, I guess, seek some guidance when you mean the, respecting the conduct of the meeting. I know Counselor Maderos, you mentioned something about quorum. Is that what we're talking about? Or is it something else?
Thank you through you, City Clerk. It's, we're talking about quorum. And we're talking about the passing of the procedural bylaw, which stated that the meeting was properly adjourned. And I think the, the events that took place or the items discussed in-camera had impact on if quorum was achieved and its continuance when we went out and I guess the meeting adjourned, where some members feel that they weren't there and there was no quorum achieved. So thus, there, the passing, the confirming bylaw was not properly passed. That's the focus. Thank you, City Clerk.
So through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor, thank you, Counselor Maderos, to Counselor Dylan's question. My position is that based on the information that was available at the time of the meeting, a confirming bylaw did pass on the 26th. So just to sort of quickly recount, council came back from closed session and reconvened, and there was a valid quorum present. That names were read out by myself in terms of having, seeing member connections. Council proceeded with its business in good faith under the presumption that a quorum was present. And they did two things, two of three things. Two, first thing was that there was a report out of the closed-session outcomes that can be reported out in public, which is normal course for council. And the second was passing a confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions of council to that point. And just before the third item, which was left on the agenda, which was the adjournment motion, it was noted by myself to the chair that it appeared that quorum was not present at that point in time. That's when the meeting was paused, and we went through a, the meeting procedure process to follow a 30-minute period to try and see if a quorum would be reestablished, which it wasn't. So the meeting ended. But based on the information that was in, that was available to the members of council that were in that meeting, based on myself as the clerk providing support to the meeting, the reasonable conclusion was that the confirming bylaw did pass because quorum was not noted as being absent until after that actual decision had occurred.
Sorry, does the, does the, does the meeting have to be officially adjourned with quorum? For the meeting to, to finish, or is it just continuing on? Like it never finished technically?
So through you, Mr. Chair, so adjournment is, is, as members know, is a common part of our meeting to just formally close the meeting. The fact that we did not have quorum and the meeting ended, that, in, in my opinion, does not negate the decision-making that council made up to that point. Include, and the key is the passage of the confirming bylaw. So, which confirms the decisions up until that point. So the fact that there is, the fact that the adjournment motion did not get placed because there was no quorum does not negate the fact that a meeting happened and that there were, there was a sufficient number of members present when a decision to occur for the confirming bylaw.
At what point in the meeting?
I'm sorry?
What, at what point is the, was the confirming bylaw passed at the meeting?
It was passed after the, through you, Mr. Chair, after the report out from closed session. So that was the next item of business.
So the report off of the closed session, and, and, and I guess there was a 30-minute wait? And then, and then the meeting never adjourned?
So the, yes, through you, Mr. Chair, so the 30-minute time period is invoked if quorum is lost and confirmed that quorum is lost, that there's physically not a quorum present, then a 30-minute clock starts to allow the decision body to reacquire quorum.
So is, is the meeting still going on then technically?
It's, I would say it's more in a, in a state of suspension, because council cannot, cannot carry on business without quorum present.
So from what I recall, if a meeting's not finished, I guess that business gets automatically transferred to the next meeting. Is that correct?
That is a possibility. However, our procedure bylaw does say, as it relates to city council meetings, that if quorum is, is lost and the, and a confirming bylaw has not passed, then the business would proceed to the next regular meeting or special meeting. If the confirming bylaw is passed, then council has made a decision to confirm those decisions to that point.
Thanks.
And that was the operating principle that existed in the meeting.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Counselor Dylan. And I should note, as Chair, I don't take the quorum, the clerk does, and if it's lost, he advises me. Counselor Pelashy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So now that that's been rectified, I guess, I think, thank you, Peter. That was, I guess, the understanding. Unfortunately, there are probably members of council that may not believe that, which is unfortunate. I guess, I think it's pretty dangerous for us to move a motion that an audio recording of closed session is made available to members of council. It has been stated many times before by me and by other counselors that this council, there is definitely a leak amongst one of the counselors on, around this table. And that's why I'm choosing not to have the audio recording, because I don't, I, I have no doubt in my mind that this audio recording will be, will be leaked out to, to somebody. So that's why I chose to, to have the exemption and not have the audio recording provided to, to myself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Fertini.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mayor, I remember the last term, we were allowed to seek legal advice because under the bar, you're under oath. So you're saying I cannot go in-camera to my own lawyer when they have an oath, just like they do in courts? And there's a problem with that? Is that what you're saying?
Through the chair, this goes back to the issue of whether you're acting in an individual capacity or in the capacity as council. If council obtains legal counsel, external lawyer, and provides them information and seeks legal advice from them, you have the protections of, of privilege if you do it in an individual capacity. And each member does it in an individual capacity. It raises the question of who is the client and who is the solicitor and whether privilege can be maintained in that circumstance.
I, I, I'm saying for myself, me, I only counsel to tell me what to do. And I go over to my own lawyer to just get advice, and he's under oath, just like any other lawyer. When you go in courts and all, everyone swears under the bar and the oath, they're not gonna go and leak it. Why can't I go see it when last term, we were told we could always see legal advice on our own if we want, so long as we pay it on our own, just for advice? So when we say we can't go out there, I don't see what, really the problem is, and I don't think so when we go to a lawyer sworn under oath, they're supposed to hold the courts, they're gonna go out there and sneak, sneak, uh, come up with the confidential stuff and, you know, stand all over the place. Just like yourself, we're taking legal advice, we take legal advice outside.
Through the chair, I, I understand your question. It's not merely a question of confidentiality. This also relates to the concept of privilege. And that solicitor-client privilege is a relationship that is protected by law between a solicitor and their client. If, if you individually are the client, you can share information and that'll be protected. But in this case, this is information that belongs to the city. And so the city or council should act as a council and seek legal advice and get, and, and, and just do, do things through the proper channels instead of people taking closed-session information and deciding to, you know, go off on their own.
So we could ask legal to come in-camera, our own legal advice?
Sorry, could you, could you?
Can I get my own legal advice to come in-camera or come over here? Or we're not allowed to, because we have to listen to what you're saying, like, as our legal?
Through the chair, no, you couldn't, you couldn't bring your own legal counsel into closed session because they are not legal advisors of the city.
Right, okay. So last term, and I'm gonna provide it this tomorrow, we were told we were allowed to seek legal advice on our own, because they're under oath. And we could waive privilege. Now, we're saying something else. So I don't know if we change our procedure bylaws, because I, I don't remember. But more than once, we were told we're always allowed to go get legal advice, so long as it's paid from our pocket, not the city, because then you need counsel to approve the budget. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Counselor Bowman.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair. Because this was brought up, I will, I will speak to it as part of the quorum issue. I was the one who has the issue with quorum. When quorum came back in, in open session, the clerk read the names and I had not signed out. I had just gone into the closed-session meeting and come back. As soon as I heard my name mentioned, I signed out of the meeting. And then I sent texts to the city clerk saying I was out of the meeting. And I guess the city clerk, and of course, he's, he's busy, he doesn't see when someone comes out, and that's fine. I have no issue with that. But what I would like to see, and I contacted WebEx and they said it's totally available, is the minutes of the meeting when everybody signed out. So I would like to see the WebEx copy of the time that I signed out of the meeting. Because to my way of thinking, I signed out long before any of the confirming bylaws were passed, long before. And again, it's not the clerk's fault that he doesn't see the sign-out on, on WebEx. But during that break of the half-hour, our IT department or somebody could have easily brought him the records to say, yes, Counselor Bowman signed it. So I would like to see the WebEx record as well to, to determine whether, whether we had quorum during the confirming bylaw or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bowman. Next up is Counselor Visante. Oh, sorry. I request for adjournment, right? You mean for recess? Okay, okay.
How many more speakers?
Three more.
Counselor Maderos has spoken once already?
Yes. Counselor Visante, followed by Counselor Santos, followed by Counselor Maderos.
Thank you very much, Mayor Brown. I want to just thank Counselor Pelashy for providing his amendment to the motion. I completely understand the reason for the amendment, and I would like to add my name as well, Mr. Clerk, if the mover of the motion will allow for my name to be added. The, I recall the, the meeting quite well. I, I am very cognizant of the things that were said in that meeting, and so I do not need to review it. But also, should this material fall into the hands of the public, I do not want to waste the clerk's time and his efforts to try to figure out who it was that revealed, that allowed the material to enter into the public domain, should that happen. I'm not saying it will. So I'm supportive of the motion, but also want to make sure that I'm not included in the release of the information. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of in the, in the same sentiment as Counselor Pelashy and Counselor Visante. I do, and, and to the city solicitor's point around the, the risk around confidentiality and, and privilege, I really, I appreciate that very much. I do have a question, though, because I find this motion somewhat redundant. Is there a way for counselors to access or review the audio and/or notes and, and various aspects of the in-camera meeting?
Through you, Mr., Mr. Mayor, to council, short answer is yes. The, the, as I mentioned, the audio recording protocol is available. So if a member of council wishes to review, or to listen to, I should say, the audio recording from closed session, they can make an appointment with the clerk's office, and we will set them up in a listening room with, with the device to listen to that closed session. If that's, and they sign in, because we do keep a record of that, of who's listened to what post-meeting. So that is accounted for in our protocol right now. In terms of other notes, the, the notes that I take from a meeting, they are captured in the minutes. And once those minutes are prepared, you know, those notes fall away. It's, that is the record of council for the closed session, the minutes.
Okay, thank you. So to be clear, there already is a protocol for counselors if they wanted to under the, the strict protocol of the clerk who signs in the information tracks, who's, you know, requested it and listened to what. A protocol already exists, which actually is, protects and, and deals with the risk associated that, that the city clerk has, has identified, the city clerk and the solicitor has identified. And my, my, my concern here is similar to Counselor Pelashy and Counselor Visante in that if, if this just ends up going into the hands, then we, we lose that level of control and, and risk confidentiality. So based on that, I would also like to have my name added to the list, because there is a protocol that already exists. If I wanted to review the audio, I could do that. I could go ask the clerk for an appointment. I could go ask the clerk for an appointment. I could sit there, I could review it. And I know that I can't make an audio recording of that audio recording and I can't forward that audio recording. So we actually protect the confidentiality of what happened in that in-camera meeting. So on that basis, I actually find this motion redundant and would also like to protect myself and add my name to the list as per Counselor Plessy and Counselor Visante.
Okay, next up is Counselor Maderos.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Question to Samir. Does counsel have the ability to waive privilege?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay, so in this case, if I'm asking to waive privilege to seek individual legal advice, what is all this nonsense that's going on? And I will tell you, we are waive privilege, so maybe be more specific, to allow individual members, if they want to seek individual legal advice. Speaking to a counselor, and I do appreciate the idea of leaks because I know last term at counsel, there was a lot of leaks. There's many leaks that seem to go on. And I will just remind the member of counsel that each council member did swear an oath. But there is other people that have access to in-camera, have not sworn an oath and who are not counselors. So I would just suggest that an issue that we have regarding leaks, I would love for every leak to be investigated truly. And I would love for every enclosed camera leak be directly, and that could be a motion, be directly investigated so we know exactly who's leaking these. And even, especially being in this forum where people are seeing these videos or we have our laptop, who's in the room and who's with us when we log on and we are council members? So, you know, speaking to that, essentially, we want to waive privilege, be able, each individual counsel, if they deem fit. Counselor Bowman is an example. Counselor Bowman, who challenges the fact that he was here for quorum, would like to be able to get legal advice. And, you know, we've given the option as a counsel or we give an option to individuals. So I am moving that we waive privilege to allow each counsel, if they so choose, to seek legal advice and request the recording in camera from our city clerk.
Thank you. Through you. Thank you, Counselor.
A recorded vote, please.
Counselor Maderos. Counselor Singh.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, to this listener.
Just a clarification. I think you were making a point. Would you actually want each identified? Here for the clerk's office.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Did you actually want each, or were you just trying to make a point? Each identified?
No, allow for each. Because what I kept hearing, there seems to be rhetoric about that a counsel doesn't have the opportunity to waive privilege and be able to get legal advice if he so chooses.
No, no, that's fine. They added, I think you were making a point. You want each identified leak to be investigated. Do you actually want that or were you just trying to make a point?
More than happy to include.
That's fine, I'm saying.
More than happy if that's available and there's an ability to do so.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Singh has the floor. He wanted clarification. Clarification was provided.
Yeah, I'm fine if that, you want to include that, keep that in.
No, no, I didn't include it. The clerk included it. That's what I'm trying to say. I thought you were just trying to make a point. I don't think you actually wanted to include it.
Yeah, I'm fine with keeping it in. People would like that, that'd be great. And I think we do have to tighten our protocols around in-camera. Thank you.
Okay, through, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't have you on the board, Counselor Fratini.
Yeah, thank you.
I said I don't have you on the board.
I think I have you on the board. Oh, I thought you called me.
No, I called, the solicitor wants to speak, but if you want to go on the board, I can put you on the board.
It's okay, let's speak. I'm using this board, not one.
Through you, Mr. Chair. As counsel is aware, things that happen, things that are discussed in closed session, counsel has the ability to share if they so choose. Counsel has the ability to waive privilege if they so choose. But I think a decision like that should be made very clearly and explicitly. And it should be made with full information about the risks associated with doing that. And so I would suggest that if we're going to waive privilege or, you know, disclose matters that are confidential, we should, I would suggest you give me the opportunity to have a closed-session discussion where we can talk about the risks associated with doing that and then counsel can make an informed and express decision. Thank you. Counselor Fratini has expressed an interest to speak. We don't have him on the board. Okay, Counselor Willens. Sure.
Yes, thank you, through the mayor.
Sorry, Counselor Willens.
Yes? Yes, I'm here.
Counselor Willens.
Hello? Yes, I'm here. You not hear me?
We can hear you.
Counselor Willens, you go.
I'm on the, do you not hear me?
Now we can. Please proceed.
Okay, okay, thank you. Maybe through the clerk, is there any way? How is this going to be sent out to each of the members? Because I'm not very confident on our, having it sent to me by email, via email because I'm just not confident that our emails are kept a secret. Is there any way we can get a, pick up an audio recording on a USB stick or something and sign for it, listen to our office and then return it?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that is, that is one way that it can be provided to members of counsel if that motion carries.
That would eliminate anybody else that sees our emails? Or, you know, not that our assistants would, but, you know, it would just take them out of the equation?
Yes, we can do that if that's the will of counsel.
Thank you. Maybe through the mayor, through the mover of the motion, maybe we could put that in there somewhere. I think all members should listen to it. But I fully respect the fact that, you know, getting it via email, there is a very good chance of it getting leaked out whether a counselor does it on his own or not. So I'd like to see that if I could. Because personally, I would like to pick it up from you, Peter, and listen to it in my office. I don't mind listening into your office, but I'd like to listen to it in my office on my own and then return it that same day.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Bowman, followed by Counselor Plessy.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sorry to interject, but on that last point, do we want to consider a modification to that third motion to say something along the lines of, instead of saying to be provided to each member and being prescriptive about data key to keep it more general to say, provided access to listen to the recording? And not, because, you know, I would have to consult with IT about what are the risks associated with providing it on a USB stick or otherwise? So if we're that prescriptive, it essentially ties the hands of staff and we may want to leave it a little bit more generic.
Yeah, if I could speak, if I could speak, Mr. Mayor, I don't particularly want to put my name on the amended with the exception because I do want to listen into it. So maybe, I don't know if we could reword it that, I don't know. I don't really, I don't really want it sent by email, but I do want to listen to it. So I'm fine with going into the office. If I have to listen into it in the clerk's office in a closed room, I will. But I don't want to be included on that list of being listed, I guess. Counselor Plessy, Counselor Visante, and Counselor Santos have put the amendment. I wouldn't support that amendment, but I would support listening to it, so. I know it's difficult. It's kind of hard to word it that way. But I don't particularly want to, I won't accept the amendment. So maybe I'll just support the original motion and just go in on my own.
So yeah, thank you, Counselor Willens. I guess I had originally stated that I thought they were friendly amendments. I'd like to withdraw that and vote on those amendments. Just because now it puts, I've had members express concerns and so I will respect and we vote on those amendments. I won't accept it as a friendly and I'll let them move the individual amendment, please.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, just so I'm clear. So the term accepting as a friendly amendment is just a colloquial term that's used at this council for if a member proposes something, another member proposes something else, the first member accepts it and then we agree to move on. There is no real term as a friendly amendment. It's really an amendment or it isn't. So what you're saying, Counselor Maderos, is?
I'd like to vote on the amendment of the addition of the names that were added by individual counselors. So I'd like to vote on that together, all the names, as an amendment.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. If those members still wish to move those amendments, they would be proper amendments to the main motion. And whether they're moved individually or as a group, I'll leave that to those members of how they wish to propose that amendment.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm looking who's next on the list.
Bowman.
I had two Doug Willens. Okay, Counselor Bowman.
Thank you very much. I just, I, we get the minutes of all the closed-session meetings every week, do we not? They're in our email. We get a password that we can use to open. So everything that happens in all our closed sessions is in all of our emails right now, is it not?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chair. I wouldn't say they're in your emails per se. So we send a link to the member, to the individual member by their email address and we send a separate email that has the password. So it's a process that a member will have to fulfill to open the minutes for closed session.
Yeah.
Or the agenda is the matter.
Thanks, Peter. But the minutes are not like a second-by-second detail of what went on in the meeting. They're just an overview. The part that I have an issue with is I know there's leaks to the media as well. But to simply put in here that each identified leak of confidential closed session be fully investigated, to me, that doesn't mean anything. Are we going to investigate by the police? Are we going to bring them to closed session and detail each one of them? Is counsel going to have to agree to this? It means nothing unless there's some substance put to it, you know, that we will turn over all files to the RCMP or whatever. Other than that, I mean, I can't support a motion that says fully investigated when we have no clue what fully investigated means. And how are you going to do it? How are you going to investigate? For instance, if somebody leaks something and then says, for example, oh, it was Bowman who leaked it and it wasn't Bowman who leaked it. How are you going to investigate something like that?
Yeah, just point of order.
Point of order?
Yes, through Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bowman. My apologies because I was responding to another counselor who talked about leaks. And I used that as a phrase and then the city clerk reflected it in it. So it's not necessarily a motion I want to move. I just left it there in case. So I'm more than happy to take it out. But I do think on an individual basis that if there are leaks which are due unduly harm to one's reputation, that this whole council should want to bend together and seek investigations on any leak of that sort. So my apologies for the confusion. Thank you.
No problem. I'm fully.
That's not a point of order?
Yeah. I think I have the floor.
What's your rule?
I think if a member wishes to withdraw an aspect of the motion, it's friendly.
I would agree to that. Is that your rule?
Yes. Thank you. Counselor Bowman.
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of doing investigations in closed sessions. But if we're going to be serious about it, let's put it as a separate item on the agenda. Let's discuss it. Let's not waste time with how we're going to do it tonight's meeting. Let's talk about it. Let's put it on the agenda and let's come up with some way of doing it. But I don't think it belongs there. So thank you, Counselor Maderos, for removing that.
Counselor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think as we continue to unfortunately waste more of staff's time tonight, I'm surprised that now the mover of the motion is withdrawing his earlier, my earlier request that I'm asking for this to be friendly and now potentially forcing me to take something that I don't want to take. I think that's unfortunate. I'm not sure why the mover of the motion wouldn't just accept that that is a friendly. I don't want the auto-recording. And Counselor Bowman is absolutely right in what he was discussing about the recordings. And they're already available to you if you want to, as per the clerk. I talked to him last week about this. Can I come in? Can I listen to the audio of the meeting? And absolutely, I could. The problem is now that this audio device, whatever the device is deemed to be appropriate, sent out by the solicitor and by the clerk to each member of council, you have every single word that was said in that meeting. And as far as I'm concerned, in that meeting that took place, there was inappropriate language. Not by me. So I do, and it will get leaked. It'll get leaked by one of you. One of you will leak it because one of you leaks it all anyways. To other people that.
Continue unless, please, use cautious language.
It'll be leaked by one of us. Is that better, Counselor? So I think it's unfortunate that Counselor Maderos doesn't accept this as a friendly. And I hope that all members of council will support the amendment that's proposed. And with what Counselor Willens was referring to, I think Counselor Willens, I know you don't want to be in the red here because we're the bad counselors, I guess, that don't want it. But it's still an opportunity for us to go to the clerk's office and to, even if we're in this amendment and it gets supported, we still have the opportunity to go into the clerk's office and listen to the audio as per what we've always been allowed to do. And I think changing what we've done in the past is, I think this is dangerous. I think it's really, really dangerous. And that's why I'm not, I won't be supporting it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Plessy. Counselor Visante.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to very clearly ask, since this motion likely will not carry with the amendments, I will just accept that, Mr. Clerk, that you will understand clearly from my perspective that I do not wish to receive any digital copy of this recording. And I hope that that doesn't create too much of a problem for the clerk because he will be, if this motion passes, he has conflicting orders. So there will be a motion saying that he shall provide to members of council and I am asking that the recording not be provided to me. I have seen the clerk's office in the past have to spend hundreds of hours investigating leaks and trying to determine who had information, who did not have information. For the record, Mr. Mayor, I just want all to know that I do not want the recording and I hope that the clerk will within himself accept that.
So Counselor Visante. Counselor Bowman just made a friendly suggestion that I'm going to encourage counsel to adopt so we don't spend more time debating this. Counselor Bowman suggested that we use the words whoever asks for it. That way, if you want it, you get it. If you don't, you don't have to get it. Is that fair, Counselor Maderos? Okay. Friendly amendment, those who ask for it.
So thank you very much, Counselor Bowman. And as I said for the stated reasons before, I vividly recall this meeting. I know what transpired. And that for me is enough. But if other members wish to recapitulate its contents, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Singh.
No, I'm happy with that.
Okay, Counselor Santos.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm happy about that suggestion as well. I will not be asking for a recording for the reasons I explained earlier. And I just wanted to confirm that obviously it will be tracked that in terms of who has been asking for it and who has a copy of the USB and electronic audio recording. Just confirmation for that if that were to come back. And perhaps the city solicitor can also make sure that that happens as well. And if this does pass, it actually is even more redundant to the existing protocol that exists with the exception of people having. with the exception of people having now a copy of the USB stick, which is out of the control of the clerk and the city in terms of where it may go. So if this amendment is put in here, then I will, I'll support that motion.
Okay. Counselor Willens.
Is that Willens or Williams to the mayor?
Willens. Chris Neal's sparring partner, Counselor Doug Willens.
Thank you through the mayor. Thank you, Counselor Bowman, for coming to a, something we can all agree on. But to the clerk and to the city solicitor, can, obviously, we'll be going back in closed session at some point in time when we review these recordings. Can you keep it confidential who has asked for it and who has listened to it until we such forward to move forward? Because if anybody else on this council knows that certain councils weren't listening to it, what's to say that they're, don't point fingers that the other ones are leaked? So let's keep it confidential, who has and who hasn't. No list goes out who's picked it up or who's listening to it until after we speak to it later.
Counselor Dillon.
Thank you. I was just going to say, in terms of the hesitancy for the... The, or council members receiving it. We do receive every week, almost every week, in-closed-session items as well. We, last term, I believe, we got the hard copy of it as well. So, you know, I do recognize what Counselor Maderos had indicated. We've all taken an oath. You know, we listen to closed sessions. There's no, we... Sorry. We have it come up. There's no preventing anybody from, you know, screen recording when we watch our in-camera or recording it. And so I think everybody, we have to trust everybody here that they do the right thing and to keep it confidential. But just wanted, that's what my point is, is that we do get confidential documents all the time. And so I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had forgotten to ask this question before. There was a comment made about employees not signing or filling out confidentiality agreements and that members are. From my understanding, there's confidentiality agreements that are filled in with your actual employment contract or employment agreement. Can I get somebody? Do we have HR on the line to... I don't know if legal can, but, or HR, can they collaborate? That that's actually taking place? When you work at the City of Brampton, you fill out a confidentiality agreement?
Good evening. It's Cynthia from HR. I can respond to that.
Hi, Cynthia.
Good evening. Through you, Chair. In response to the question, I can confirm that employees do sign. They read the confidentiality policy and then an acknowledgement that they have signed, they have read, understood, and then sign off at the time when they are hired to the city.
Thank you so much, Cynthia. I really appreciate that. Those were, that was just my question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Williams.
All the questions.
Well, there's no other speakers?
No other speakers.
Okay. Okay, let's, can we just go right to the vote since there's no other speakers?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we can.
Okay.
So I'm just going to clarify the motion.
Recorded vote.
Recorded vote's been requested on the motion. But I just want to clarify. So the motion itself is in three parts. Part one is the paragraph that says the video of the full open session of the meeting held on January 26th be provided to all members of council via brampton.ca. The second clause is that the city solicitor be requested to report to the February 16th Committee of Council meeting on the appropriateness to disclose a closed-session audio recording as proposed below. So it's a conditional recommendation, motion, and that the audio recording of the closed meeting held on January 26th be provided to those members who request it and that the clerk be directed to request a confidential list thereof. And I'm going to suggest that Counselor Willens' motion at the bottom should also be conditional listed under there because it will be, it should be subject as well to the city solicitor's advice on the 16th. Otherwise, it defeats the purpose if Counselor Willens' motion carries on its own and council has given direction that those audio recordings are going to be released. And then the third clause is that the city solicitor be requested to report to the February 16th meeting Committee of Council in the scope of a potential external opinion with regard to the legal considerations with respect to the conduct of the meeting, quorum, confirming bylaw, proper adjournment. And those are the motions. The rest are struck out and have been withdrawn or are not been placed. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the recorded vote's been requested on the motion in its entirety. Moved by Counselor Maderos, seconded by Counselor Dillon. All in favor, please indicate. And I'm just here with me, I'm looking for my recorded vote. All in favor, please indicate. Counselor Santos.
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Visante.
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Willens.
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Plessy.
No.
That's a no. Counselor Bowman.
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Maderos.
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Fortini.
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Singh.
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Dillon.
Are we voting on this voting on screen?
Yes.
Your vote is?
Yes, yes.
Yes, that's a yes. Counselor Dillon, Mayor Brown.
Nope.
No. That motion carries nine to two.
Okay. This takes us to our next item, which is a request.
Sorry?
Request for a break?
The will of council.
When does the council want to come back? Eight forty-five? Eight forty-five? Okay, return it. It's eight twelve. Okay, eight forty-five.
Members of council and members of the public and staff participating, this meeting is now recessed until eight forty. Counselor Willens and Counselor Williams, can I just confirm you're present?
Oh, I'm here, Peter.
Thank you, Counselor Willens. Thank you, Counselor Williams. And members of council, we have eleven, all eleven members present. There are nine members in the chamber.
Okay. I think everyone will adopt the next motion. You may have say no speeches needed. Counselor Maderos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the guidance. I would just like to move a motion that we send on two sort of issues that I've identified. One is the completion of the meeting and also in reference to voting procedures related to a specific item regarding HR matters and identifiable individual. So I would ask the city clerk on behalf of council that we ask for a bunsman to investigate the completion of the meeting, the proper completion, and also into that in-camera agenda item, identifiable individual, HR matters. I believe Counselor Bowman is seconding it. Recorded vote, please.
Counselor Plessy.
No, I'm good. I was going to jump on and second it, but I'm here.
See no other speakers?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So just before we go to a vote, so we have a seconder by Counselor...
Bowman.
Bowman. And then we just need to make sure that the motion is correctly stated so members know what they're voting on. And just a reminder that at council meetings, motions should be placed in writing. So we, the members have something that they can, they know what they're voting on. So this is that the ombudsman be requested to investigate, one, the conclusion or completion of the meeting of January 26th in terms of, I think Counselor Maderos, she said if there was a proper completion of the meeting.
So that the confirming bylaw was properly passed and that there was proper quorum to achieve it.
So it'll be that, sorry, Charlotte, I forgot to turn on Counselor's mic. So the completion of the meeting of January 26th and that to confirm that the confirming bylaw was properly passed and there was a quorum present. Is that correct, Councilman?
Yes. And the second portion would be regarding the voting procedure. The voting procedures were properly followed according to our procedural bylaw and the municipal act. And that's in relation to a specific item about the identifiable individual regarding HR matters.
Is this, just for clarity, is this in regard to item nineteen point ten at the January 26th meeting?
It was the last item we dealt with. It was the second last one because I believe the last one we didn't receive quorum.
I think the item you're referring to is item nineteen point ten of the January 26th meeting.
Counselor Maderos, since everyone seems to support this, we suggest that all of council second it?
As you prefer.
Through, sorry, through the chair, to the clerk. In bullet one, it says "procedure bylaw." I believe that should be confirming by law.
Confirming by law. Thank you.
Yeah, clause one, Charlotte, it would be in brackets "confirming bylaw."
Okay. Moved by Counselor Maderos, seconded by all of council. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. There's a closed-session item as well? Is that still in the tension, Counselor Maderos?
Did we not ask for a recorded vote?
No.
I think there was a recorded vote. Did you ask for the recorded vote? Now we need a recorded vote because we both want council seconding it. Yeah, council seconding the votes.
Yeah, okay.
It's not a recorded vote. That's what it was wish. I'm fine with it.
I like this collaborative spirit post-break. Everybody was just tired and hungry. Okay, how long does the clerk...
Is that a ruling?
Yes. How long does the clerk need?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would require fifteen minutes. But before we move into close, we have to pass the motion to go into closed session, which is on the screen. We need a mover and seconder.
Moved by Counselor Bowman, seconded by Counselor Visante. To move into closed session and deal with the following items. Six point one. Open meeting exception two three nine two B and D of the municipal act. Is anyone opposed to that motion? Otherwise, your vote will count as affirmative. Hearing... Do we need to do the public question period?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for identifying that.
Was there any questions?
Just going to confirm right now. And there are none.
Okay. Anyone opposed to going into closed session? Hearing none. Motion carries. The meeting is now recessed. For council to consider as closed-session business, committee boardroom, CH four A. Members of council, after recess to move into closed session, you are asked to join the assigned closed-session virtual meeting link sent to you or join in person. After closed session is completed, council reconvene in public session to complete its business on today's agenda, including reporting out any actions arising from the closed-session portion, passing confirming bylaw, and decisions from this meeting and adjourning the meeting.
Hi, Charlotte, it's Peter. And Tamia, I'm going to give you back host.
Okay, thanks, Peter.
So, members of council, it is eleven oh two. I'm just gonna confirm the members I do see present, uh, in the session. I see Counselor Santos, uh, I see Counselor Visante, I see, uh, I literally see them because I hear my apologies. Um, not used to this. I see Counselor Singh, I see Counselor Bowman, Mayor Brown, Counselor Dillon, and online, I see Counselor Willens, Counselor Williams is there? So we are missing Counselor Plessy, Counselor Fortini, and Counselor Maderos. Okay?
They're on their way. Peter. Just to confirm, Peter, just so you hear my voice, I am here, so there's no confusion.
Thank you, Counsel Willens.
I'm here, Peter. Counsel Williams is here.
Thank you, Counselor Williams, and...
They just messaged, they're walking in.
Okay. Counselor Maderos, Counsel Fortini, and Counsel Plessy are just walking in. So, Mr. Mayor, you do have a quorum present, you can proceed.
Okay. As a result of our closed session today, we have everyone in the room now. I wish, well, everyone on the room or online, um, I wish to report the following. Uh, open session meeting exception two three nine two B and D of municipal act, personal matters but identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees and labor relations, employees negotiations. This item was considered, and through the clerk, I think we have to take a vote?
Uh, the, the item was considered and information was received, and I believe there is going to be a motion that a member is going to introduce, a procedural motion.
I believe Counselor, uh, Visante had the motion.
Yes, uh, and the, the motion is, I'm not sure we're gonna be able to bring it up on the screen on time, but I'm gonna read it. So the motion moved by Counselor Visante is that the procedure bylaw be temporarily suspended as it relates to section thirteen point three, um, in regards to no motion to reopen shall be reconsidered once resolved, as it relates to the February eighth special council meeting. And that, because it is a temporary suspension, it requires a two-thirds vote.
So let's change, Peter, or correct the wording, just to waive that. I'll sway the vote.
Yeah, it's, it's temporary suspend the procedure bylaw, yes. As it relates to section thirteen point three, which speaks to a reconsideration of a reconsideration. And it as, it only relates to today's special council meeting. And, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, a temporary, uh, suspension of the procedure bylaw is a two-thirds vote of council.
A recorded vote, Mayor.
So two-third, uh, a vote of coun, a recorded vote of council's been requested on the procedural motion to waive section thirteen point three. All in favor, please indicate. Counselor Santos?
No.
Counselor Visante?
No.
Counselor Willens?
Yes.
Counselor Willens is a yes. Counselor Plessy?
No.
Is a no. Counselor Bowman?
Yes.
Is a yes. Counselor Maderos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Is a yes. Counselor Fortini?
Yes.
Is a yes. Counselor Singh?
No.
Is a no. Counselor Dillon?
Yes.
Is a yes. Mayor Brown?
No.
Is a no, and just for the record, because the mic may have been off, Counsel Santos and Counsel Visante voted, uh, against, so the required two-thirds has not been achieved.
Okay, this takes us to the confirming bylaw, item seven point one. I have a motion moved by Counselor Visante and seconded by Counsel Fortini to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count as affirmative. Thank you. There are no objections to the motion carries. This takes us to adjournment. Council's next scheduled to meet Wednesday, February ninth, at nine thirty a.m. for a regular meeting. I have a motion moved by Counsel Fortini and seconded by Counselor Singh. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count as affirmative. Hearing no objections, the motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Please stay safe, get your vaccination, boost your shot, practice social distancing, please all get along, and wear a mask when required.